Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Monday, July 12th City Council Meeting for the City of Belle Air Beach. This was rescheduled from July 6th due to the storm. Before we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, fellow city, as I'm sure you're all aware, on June 24th Surfside, Florida experienced a horrible tragedy. The Champlain Tower South collapsed. As of today, there's 94 people confirmed dead and 22 people missing. So I'm going to ask that we rise and observe a moment of silence and then we'll go into the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Pledge of Allegiance. The matter of course, please call the roll.
Councilman Bob Anaki?
Here.
Councilman Frank Baker?
Present.
Councilman Linda?
Here.
Councilman Leslie?
Here.
City Manager Lynn Reeves?
Here.
City Attorney Fred Riley?
Here.
Okay. Thank you, Patty. So first item of business is the approval of the agenda. I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Leslie Van Terrol.
Second.
Seconded by Rita Swol. Any discussion? I have an item that needs to be moved. The June 7th meetings are incomplete, so I'm just asking that we approve it to the regular agenda. It'll take no more than 30 seconds to explain what needs to be added, but it has to be moved. It cannot stay the way it is. So I'll ask for a motion.
Seconded.
I'm sorry, that's why.
Me.
Rob, and I'm just going to say, everybody, I have two ears that are infected right now. It feels like I'm under water, so please speak up tonight for my benefit. Thank you, Rob. And a second? If you leave it the way it is, it's illegal. Second? Okay, it does. Mr. Riley, if we were to approve this agenda, it would be an illegal act. So what would shadow I do here? I don't believe I have to entertain a motion for, I'm sorry, to, you know, for this, for these minutes in this situation. I can deal with it when we get to the.
What's the basis for it to be a?
Very complete, and they need something that's required by law and that's not in there.
I'm sorry, I'm not following the train of thought.
Okay, the train of thought is simple. There's a required document that needs to be in these minutes and it has not been included by our clerk.
Okay.
I'll second that. It's okay.
I just want to understand what the basis?
Okay, now, I'm doing this for the council's own good, seriously. I don't care personally. It's my paper that has to go in there, so. All right, got a second by Dave Gaddis. So the reason for the move is that there's, it's missing the Form 8B. That's required by law. I don't know why it's not in here. It's the second time it's happened, Madam Clerk. So it needs to be.
On the commitment book where you sign minutes are.
But it's not on ours, so what we're approving is, it says it needs to be in the minutes and the minutes that we have do not have it in it, so.
No, I was just telling you where.
Okay. So as long as we have the stipulation that it's going to be in the final one, it's not okay with that, but that's required by law. I'm going to ask if the clerk will stipulate to that, we can leave everything alone and add.
Very well.
Very well. She's stipulating to it, it will be included, so that's the Form 8B. That's the recusal statement from last council session. Okay, approval of the agenda. Any further discussion? Citizen comments? Back to council? All in favor? Aye. No opposed? Seven zero. Agenda's approved. Next, we move to item two, citizen comments. Each speaker has three minutes to come up to the podium here, please address the council. You have three minutes to speak to us on any non-agenda item. If you wish to speak on an agenda item later on, we will get to that point, and I will ask again for citizen comments on that item. So if we go out of order, I'll just ask you to sit down until you, until that item comes back up. There's a code of conduct on the desk. We observe that code of conduct, so if you come up and speak with us, please do the same. Would anyone like to address the council? John Hensick.
John Hensick, 22nd Street, Belle Air Beach. Mr. Mayor, council members, at last month's council meeting, council debated at length and ultimately passed a resolution distancing itself from a certain lawsuit brought forth by a member of the council and a citizen of the city. During the discussion, a council member questioned why the city had not requested or an injunction in the interim until this thing was resolved or came to court for a resolution so that the citizens could enjoy the privilege, the benefit of beach access on Belle Air Shore. He got no response. During citizen questions and comments, I approached the podium, asked the same question. I did not get a response either. I understand, for as many years that I've been coming to these meetings, I may not necessarily, or a citizen necessarily, get a response at the same meeting the question is posed. But now, this has been over a month, I've heard nothing. So I asked the question again. Why hasn't the city filed an injunction against the city of Belle Air Shore so that we can use the beach and even just the beach area in the parking areas? And on a separate subject, I just want to pay a compliment to the city manager and a couple of work staff for keeping the beaches clean with all this mess with red tide and fish and everything else. My wife and I enjoyed the beach on the 4th of July on our beach. It was very nice to go out there and see a clean beach. Y'all do an outstanding job, so. Mr. Lynn, if you would share that, please do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hensick. Mr. Riley, I have the authority to refer this matter. I'm going to refer this matter to you. I'm not going to comment on it. We have litigants in the room, a potential person that might be bringing into this lawsuit in this room from Belle Air Shore. I'm not going to comment on it. You can feel free to comment if you'd like now. You don't have to comment at all, but I do have the right to refer it to you. So I did see that this had come up, and again, I'm not going to say why I'm not doing that.
Okay, well, I will make one or two comments. One comment I'll make is the city was not named as a party to the lawsuit, and because the city wasn't named as a party to the lawsuit, the city has not participated in any way, shape, or form in the lawsuit. And neither of the parties have motioned the court to have the court bring the city in as an indispensable party. And although I personally know of the lawsuit's existence, I have not monitored it. I, you know, have heard things about it, and I'm not going to comment on the merits of the case at all, because it involves several people, one of which is a member of the city council. And they, I've said at the meeting last month, I said that the individuals that serve on the city council have their, certainly are here in a representative capacity as an elected official, but they also have the right as an individual to pursue a lawsuit or to vindicate their rights if they so choose. And they've so, they've chosen, and, you know, at this point, I want to abide by the city code provisions about discussing prospective litigation, and that's really all I would like to say about it.
Okay, thank you. Any other citizens like to address the council? Seeing no other hands, I will close citizen comments and move to the presentation by the Pinellas Sheriff. Sheriff, are you prepared to make this presentation tonight?
Yes, sir.
Okay, please come up.
Good evening. For the month of May, the Belle Air Beach.
Sheriff, excuse me, just for the record, Sheriff.
Oh, I'm sorry. Corporal Pearl.
Thank you, Corporal.
For the month of May, there were zero for the UCR property and person crimes. There were two people arrested in the entire city. There was a total of 734 events of the top three, house checks, direct patrols, and traffic stops. And there was only one crash in the entire city, and that was along the Belle Air Beach Causeway. And there was also 142 citations and warnings issued for the entire city.
Sheriff, we had month of zero crime and can't get any better than that, so again, my thanks to the men and women in the sheriff's office. I have one observation I want to give you. I went to the beach recently in Belle Air Beach, and large group of individuals, open containers of alcohol, glass bottles, doing it for hours on end, no enforcement whatsoever. And the sheriff came and I saw him go, we were quite ways away, but we saw him go up by Belle Air Shore, and I don't know what he was doing, to tell you the truth, but he went and he left, but he didn't come to the right side and start working his way down. They were well behaved, I would say, but glass bottles, Corona, you know, I mean, I like it too, but I don't drink it on the beach, so I'll just point it out to you in terms of if you're out there, you know, it's happening. It was going all day long, and they weren't Belle Air Beach people. I think they were condo renters or something, but that's what's happening out there, so if we could just maybe keep an eye on things.
Absolutely. I'll pass that information. Thank you.
Anyone else on the council? Citizens, any comments for the sheriff? Thank you, Sheriff. Great month, excellent. Item four is the board reports. We have Board of Adjustment, Board of Park and Recreation and Planning and Zoning. We'll start with Board of Adjustment. Mike Kelly.
Mike Kelly, 2740 High Business Drive, Board Chairman for Board of Adjustment. The past quarter, the board had a really active quarter. Two of our regular members resigned in April, and thanks to the council, we put back Mark Bean in May, we put back Jane Goldman in June, and we added an alternate, Gerald Wizzo-Watty, who attended our one and only variance that we did that last month in June. It was a full board, plus an alternate. New residents in the city needed something similar to what you did, Dave, and what Frankie had with backyards that affected waterfront and wedge lines in the back. The board granted the variance. It was a good discussion, and the board members are getting more and more familiar and more experienced, so I thank you all for filling our board. I'm glad we have an alternate, and we still have one opening for another, the second alternate, which I know one of the regular members says they're a house for sale down the street from the Mr. Mayor. I don't know if he sold it yet. He was in attendance at our meeting in June, but should he sell his home in Lake Belle Air Beach, we have an alternate on board. So busy month, busy quarter, and I thank you all for filling our vacancies.
Mike, thank you. I have a question for you. I know you gave a course not too long ago with some of your newer members, and now it looks like you've got a lot of new members here, and yes, you're correct. I don't believe the house is sold yet, at least as of the other day when I drove by, but are you giving any thought, maybe you could give another class, another?
I'm here because when you look at the two that you appointed as our regular members, one was Mark Bean, who served with you on council. He served with me on a board adjustment before he was on council, so he stepped right in, gave a playbook, and he was ready to roll. Jane Goldman has been involved in the city for years and years and years, hit the ground running, and she too had no problem with it. Mr. Hollis, one of the people that ironically didn't attend the training session, is the gentleman who has his home for sale. So he did well at the meeting, and, you know, the strengths and the experience of the other people is what's going to make this, make this in place.
Good.
So it was a good, it was a good order.
Council members, questions for Mike Kelly? Citizens, do we have any questions? Thank you again.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council.
Parks Board?
Hi, everyone. I'm Tammy Levenda. I'm the chairperson of the Park and Rec Board. I actually have my whole board here with me this evening, so, which is very nice. We have three people right now. The whole class is here, Sweets, our new secretary, and Nora Kodak, who we all met at the last meeting and voted on. She's our new vice chair. And then George Ortell, who, like, he's been on the last, however many parks and recs board, he's our historian. So we do have one board opening, and we have two alternates opening, which are always posted, and we're always looking for help, because we too, we, like, I mentioned during the last, I think I started last September, we have just been slowly activating new activities into our calendars. I look online, we still have the yoga and the caboar, we just, the blood drives, and then we just started with the beach cleanups. So August 7th, they're always on the first Saturday of the month. We meet at 19th Street. They're growing month by month, so we welcome volunteers to come. We met some members of our community last month, which is very nice to see them come out and help out, so we just kind of meet at 19th Street and go both directions and just kind of clean up, so that's good. In the springtime, I mentioned, some of you were here, some of you aren't, we were talking about doing a couple of events.
Well, then, you have to stick right to that microphone. Yeah, there you go.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, you move the match. That's right.
Is that better?
Yeah, that's perfect.
Okay, sorry. So we talked about doing three different events. In the spring was one, and we were looking at Jazz in the Park, and because of COVID, and we really didn't want to have to wear masks outside, we kind of moved everything to the fall. So there was a little bit of confusion. I'm not sure, I'm just going to give you a little bit of detail, because everybody was pretty pointed on, like, you know, their suggestions or their concerns about how this would be run. So I just wanted to give a couple of points, and then I'll answer any questions, and then I'm not sure if, like, there needs to be a vote. Speaking with Lynn Reeves, I guess before, like, historically, like, things like this, if they were small community events, they didn't need to be voted on, but I love all of your, like, support and approval on this, so just a few things that we talked about, and we pretty much discuss it at every single meeting, just to make sure that we have, we want to be buttoned up, and we want to make sure that everything is addressed, but some of the biggest concerns that were presented to me, either during the meeting or after the meeting, was the fact that they want, we want this to be a Belle Air Beach private party, residents only, it is not open to the public, it will not be advertised as such, so, like, the residents will be invited individually, like, by a local store nailer, and there will be no signage, no newspapers, no magazines, something like that. We will have a detailed parking plan, we will have an officer on site, and every single detail of the three events that we're looking at for September, one in October, which was the pet and kid parade, and then a little Christmas, like, holiday social. All of those are very in detail, coordinated with all of city staff, meaning Kyle and Lynn and Patty, so there's really nothing that we do or talk about. Like, we kind of do research, give the suggestions, and then everything is carried out as far as, like, I don't even buy the donuts for the beach cleanup. Like, Kyle orders those, and pays for them, and then I pick them up. So, like, they're managing with us every detail, so just to make sure that we're all, like, on the same page and there's no surprises, and no one is being, you know, like, at the last minute going, oh my God, how is this managed? What are we going to do with this? So, that being said, I don't know if you have questions about it, the Jazz in the Park we're looking at Saturday, September 25th, from 5:00 to 8:00. We will not have, we're maybe looking at one, like, Italian night vendor, but for the most part, we're leaving all the parking places open for residents. You know, we're encouraging if you can walk, if you can ride your bike, if you can carpool or whatnot, because we don't want, like, the causeway jammed up, we just want, like, a nice even flow, and we'll just have room for everybody in the back. Low key, simple, we'll be selling, like, you know, the Belle Air Beach t-shirts and tank tops, beach towels. We, one of you, we're kind of looking for a license plate that we used to have in the past, so we're, you know, still working on those things as we speak, so we'll have some nice things that residents can buy if they want, no pressure, obviously. But otherwise, it's just like a nice event to get to meet people and listen to some music and, and be in a good pleasant atmosphere, so. I don't know a lot of people on the north end, I would love to meet some more, because I know our neighbors are great, and I would just love to meet more people, and that's all that the board is hoping to find, or, you know, to do with this event, and all the events actually, so. But if you have any questions, or if you guys want to, is it something that you would vote for? I mean, as far, okay, perfect.
May I help ask a few questions?
Wait, are you finished? Before I go to the council, spare questions?
Sure.
Okay. Council, Rita Swol.
Okay, you mentioned that you have details and basically a plan put together. Can you provide that to city council, because that's one of the things I have consistently asked for, is some type of a plan. Now, granted, if you're not going to tie up, you know, our streets for parking, we wouldn't need a parking plan, but as far as your budget dollar amount you're going to spend, your safety plan, your, you know, plan to use the city personnel in what aspects, that kind of thing, if you could put together a plan for us, I would really like that, because that's one thing I have pushed for for a long time. I also wanted to say, I have received a lot of good feedback about the beach cleanup and the blood drying, and so you can definitely put me on your list for the beach cleanup. I will be happy to help and assist with that, but nothing but great comments from the community, and I've talked to quite a few of them, and they are so appreciative of that part, as well as the blood dry. Maybe not so much about the exercise, because there's a lot of discipline. I'll do that, but anyway, just great feedback from the injured June, so that I am very appreciative, and I wanted to make sure I told you that. So if you could just give us, that's the only thing else I'm looking for, so, is a plan for each event that you intend to hold.
Okay, and we actually do already have that in place, so, like, it's on a spreadsheet that Kyle has and probably Lynn has, as far as broken down by what we need, what it will cost, whatnot. The way we've been discussing it, or maybe you can help me out with this, is, like, our, our budget has already been approved, and then, so on the spreadsheet is, like, basically how some of it will be broken down, and then it has been approved again. But we do have that on the spreadsheet, I can get it all, I've had it emailed to you tomorrow, and because we're not having vendors or anything like that, like, we have a parking, like, layout as from past events, but there's no street parking, so I know that was a big concern, and there's no vendors, there's, there's not going to be a whole lot going on to take up space, so it'll just be for parking, for residents. And I'm going to encourage everybody to get their parking stickers, because, you know, it's, it's another way for, like, what is Sheriff's?
Speaking tonight.
Sorry, he knows you're a resident, because you have your sticker on your car, so, without having to IT people.
Before we get too far along with this, let me be the voice of someone who have some internal controls. I don't know what Mr. Reeves told you, but I know what we've done in the past, and in the past, we had, this council approved the events. Now, maybe I'm missing something, I may, okay, and I don't remember every single item that comes by us, but I think the last thing that we did was clear the slate with prior events. I don't know that we ever as a council approved the new events and then approved operating budgets, dates, all of that kind of stuff, so I think that is something we have to do with our council. Although the money's in the budget, it doesn't mean that there's no city events unless this council approves it. That's not in the purview of the city manager. We've been down that road already with citywide garage sales, and he's been called out twice on it. It has to come by council for the council here to approve it, and I think we're going to approve every one of these, but it does need to come up to council just for your protection and ours in the cities, and, you know, making sure we have insurance and everything else that's officially sanctioned here. I don't remember us doing that, and if I did, then somebody refresh my age and memory here, but did we ever approve the events for this year?
No, 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 but it's July, and the events aren't until, like, the end of September, so, like, that's why I'm just kind of giving you some more detail that I really, we touched upon it last time, but when everybody came to me with questions and concerns, I wanted to make sure that I had the answers to those, which we definitely have, and it's all written down. And Lynn, if you can, maybe, because I'm not sure, can we vote on these tonight?
No, cannot. That's what I was going to ask you here. So here's the game plan, okay? If you can, you certainly can send everything out to council in advance. You said you have everything. I think that would help, because this way we have the information. We already know the events. I think you're talking about Jazz in the Park, September. There's a trick-or-treat thing with bulks and stuff, okay? And then there's one other event.
There's a holiday social, like a Christmas tree binding, like, for one of the council meetings, like, the first is Monday, December.
So if you could just put together something on that, or, get it to Lynn Reeves, he will put it on the August agenda, and then we will pass this in August, and then you have full council support and blessing. Of course, if it doesn't pass, you don't have to do anything on it, but it's going to pass, I would pretty, you know, be pretty sure. My only concern is just that we track the budget on this. Last time, we made sure we tracked what each event does. My only question for you with regards with parking and Jazz in the Park, you said you're not going to have street parking. What happens when this lot fills up? Where do the people go?
Well, I, if it was.
Only 35 cars.
What?
It's only 35 cars, I think.
Oh, Pat said we have 70 parking places, so.
This lot? I'm sorry? It'll be fine.
Yeah, so we have 70, and, you know, if it was me and I came late and there was no parking, I would, if I really wanted to go, I'd either come back and walk, take myself on a walk, or I'd, I mean, there's, and we're going to encourage that, we don't want that, but we think we have enough parking. If we fill this parking lot, I would be very happy. You know, the people that are walking and riding their bikes, if we had that many residents in attendance, I, I would be thrilled, so.
Political, council?
Yes, it sounds to me like Parks and Rec is very organized. Congratulations. This is very refreshing. I like hearing this. It sounds like you're, you're planning things out very well, just get the formalities cleaned up so that we can vote on it. I think if we had had this two weeks ago, we probably would be voting on it tonight.
Right, okay, now I understand. Thank you. Are there any other questions in regards to?
Let me run that. I, I, hang on.
Sure.
I'll ask some questions, and then we'll get, does anybody else on council have questions?
I'm just concerned on what Councilman Swol said about parking in the streets. I mean, dabbling in closing, or opening the streets up to park, if you have 70 spots. I mean, you can always park at 6th Street, 12th Street. Have we, if, if it's a real big success, and I'm not big on government spending money on entertaining the citizens, but have we ever looked at, like, having PSD A giving us a short bus and just hitting a couple of streets, you know what I'm saying?
I'm not sure. I can look into that.
I don't think it would be that costly, but I don't want to see the streets being opened up to parking.
No, they won't be, and that was one of the biggest and loudest concerns that people had, were street parking and if there needs to be emergency access vehicles and all of that, so we weren't doing that, which is also why we're not doing vendors, because they would take up half of the lot if they had their everything set up, so. But, like, the other concern is, like, just, like, the garbage and the recycle, and, like, my board is small, there's only four of us right now, hopefully we get to our seven, but with a few volunteers, which I know we'll have, we pretty much don't have to ask the city for anything other than, like, you know, what they would normally take out the garbage, but we're going to do the setup, we're going to man the tables, which there are only three, we're going to have a hydration station, a first aid station, and then, like I said, we'll have, like, a little table off to the side with our Belle Air Beach wearables or whatnot, and then we'll help with the cleanup. So we're really not asking the city staff, because I know they're, you know, they have a lot on their plates now, so, like, we're not doing any more than we can manage ourselves, if that makes sense.
I didn't hear anything about restrooms and that group of things. You can use the inside once here?
The middle will be open, so, yeah, there will be, yeah, we would have it, and we would have to work on it, so if we couldn't get in the building, it would be a non, a non-event.
Any other council comments, questions? Citizens, any questions? Thank you very much. We'll see you back in August, and you can send us anything you have in the meantime, and I, I will plan on these events going through, so just continue if you're working. And thank you to the rest of the Parks Board for working on this, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Planning and zoning, anyone? No, no report.
Mayor, I'm sorry, I'm behind the microphone, I support, but I did want to let you know that Chair Emfeldt said that he did not have.
Okay, so, and if anyone couldn't hear, that Chair, J.C. Emfeldt, said there's no report. Okay, now we go to the public hearing, item number five. This is consideration of ordinance 21-03, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Belle Air Beach, Florida, providing for the amendments to section 2-245 E8, 2-247 B, section 2-3.
But with a few volunteers, which I know we'll have, we pretty much don't have to ask the city for anything other than like, you know, what they would normally take out the garbage. But we're going to do the setup. We're going to man the tables, which there are only three. We're going to have a hydration station, a first aid station, and then like I said, we'll have like a little table off to the side with our Ballard Beach wearables or whatnot. And then we'll help with the cleanup. So we're really not asking the city staff because I know they're, they have a lot on their plates now. So like, we're not doing any more than we can manage ourselves, if that makes sense.
I didn't hear anything about restrooms and that group of things. Have you been using the inside once here?
The building will be open. So yeah, there will be, yeah, we wouldn't have it and we wouldn't do work on it. So if we couldn't get in the building, it would be a non, a non event.
Any other council comments, questions? Citizens, any questions? Thank you very much. We'll see you back in August. And you can send us anything you have in the meantime. And I, I would plan on these events going through, so just continue if you're working. And thank you to the rest of the Parks Board for working on this. Appreciate it. Planning and zoning, anyone? No, no report.
Mayor, I'm sorry, I'm behind the microphone.
Oh.
But I did want to let you know that Chair McFelt said that he did not have.
Okay, so if anyone couldn't hear, that Chair J C McFelt said there's no report. Okay, now we go to the public hearing, item number five. This is consideration of ordinance 21-03 in ordinance of the city council of the city of Ballard Beach, Florida, providing for the amendments to section 2-245 E8, 2-247 B, section 2-350A, section 2-350B, and section 2-350C of the city code ordinances, providing for incorporation of recitals, providing for approval of the amendments to section 2-45E8, 2-247B, section 2-350A, section 2-350B, and section 2-350C of the city code ordinances, providing for a copy to be kept on file, providing for separability, providing for the repeal of all ordinances in conflict herewith, and providing for an effective date. This is the second and final reading. This is, what this ordinance is about is consideration of the board's recommendation, recommended amendments to the city code regarding administrative procedures, including authority for expenditures. I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
Dave Gaddis, second by Frank Banker to Dave Gaddis.
Nope, this is basically second time around. Nothing's changed. Lynn, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Not, I'm not ready for Lynn yet. Counsel? I have one question. Page two, we changed these numbers last time and I'm not, this may be correct or it may not be correct. Somebody tell me. Section 4A, it says, "The city manager shall establish an administrative policy setting forth the procedures for obtaining pricing for expenditures up to $10,000." But this is the section that deals with expenditures up to $5,000. Is that the way it's supposed to be or is that a typo? I know we were changing these last time. Now I'll hear from the city manager, because you wrote this.
Actually, I didn't.
Well, it was your, no, but it was your, we changed these last time. So it was, there wasn't, this didn't generate this question last time.
Yeah, it's just, actually, it's just saying, I have to establish a policy for $5,000. That's all it said.
Well, if that's the case, then the next page, it talks about you establishing policies up to $10,000. So I think something's not, it doesn't seem right.
So move.
There's a procedure there. So I'm just, it seems to me like that should say $5,000.
No, that's a procedure to get at least two written bids. That's what that procedure's for.
Okay.
And if it's in the approved city budget, I can, can do that. And that's the way the other law is.
So the five, the $10,000 is correct?
Yes.
Okay, that's, that was my only comment. Any other council comments? City, citizens? Back to counsel. Hey, Glennie, last word. Call the question.
I have none.
Okay. So before us is item five. This is consideration of, I have to read the whole thing again. Consideration of ordinance 21-03 in ordinance of the city council of the city of Ballard Beach, Florida, providing for the amendments to section 2-245 E8, section 2-247 B, section 2-350A, section 2-350B, and section 2-350C of the city code ordinances, providing for incorporation of recitals, providing for approval of the amendments to section 2-245 E8, 2-247B, section 2-350A, section 2-350B, and section 2-350C of the city code ordinances, providing for a copy to be kept on file, providing for separability, providing for the repeal of all ordinances in conflict herewith, and providing for an effective date. This is the second reading. Madam Clerk, there has been publication of this, correct?
Yes.
Thank you. The answer was yes, if you couldn't hear on the microphone. I'm ready to call for the roll call vote.
Councilmember Ocking?
Aye.
Councilmember Baker?
Aye.
Councilmember Gunn?
Aye.
Councilmember Otero?
Aye.
Councilmember Swob?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gaddis?
Aye.
Mayor Manta?
Aye. To pass a seven to zero. Next, the public hearing is item six. Consideration of ordinance 21-04 in ordinance of the city, of the, of the city council of the city of Ballard Beach, Florida, providing for the amendments to section 54-35A and section 54-62A of the city code ordinances, providing for incorporation of recitals, providing for approval of the amendments to section 54-35A and section 54-62A of the city code ordinances, providing for a copy to be kept on file, providing for separability, providing for the repeal of all ordinances in conflict herewith, and providing for an effective date. This is also the second reading. If it passes tonight, it becomes new law. This is consideration of the board's recommended amendments to the city code regarding administrative procedures, including these schedules. I'll entertain a motion. Motion? Motion by Glenn Gunn, second. I heard Dave Gaddis. Glenn Gunn?
I have no questions. I'll leave it there.
Anyone else? City manager, any comments? Little, no? Citizens, any comments on this? No citizen comments. Back to counsel. Glenn Gunn, last word.
Call the question.
You got it. Okay, so before us is item six, consideration of ordinance 21-04 in ordinance of the city council of the city of Ballard Beach, Florida, providing for the amendments to section 54-35A and section 54-62A of the city code ordinances, providing for incorporation of recitals, providing for approval of the amendments to section 54-35A and section 54-62A of the city code ordinances, providing for a copy to be kept on file, providing for separability, providing for the repeal of all ordinances in conflict herewith, and providing for an effective date. Yes, both passes this. Madam Clerk, there has been publication?
Yes.
Yes, there has been publication. Please call roll.
Councilmember Baker? Councilmember Gunn?
Aye.
Councilmember Otero?
Aye.
Councilmember Swob?
Aye.
Councilmember Ocking?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gaddis?
Aye.
Mayor Manta?
Aye, pass a seven to zero. We're now going to the consent agenda. There's two items on this. There will be one proposal and then we will vote on it. There's no discussion. Consent agenda, item seven, approval of the June 7th, 2021 city council meeting minutes. And I will, per the clerk, that A and B form will be added to that one that I had given her. And also item eight, approval of the June 21st, 21, 2021 city council work session minutes. Do I hear a motion? Motion to approve by Leslie Otero, second.
Aye, I'm in second.
Okay, ahead of ourselves, read this, we'll make it second. No discussion on this. I'm calling the question. We're going to do a vote to approve item seven and eight, approval of the June 7th, 2021 city council meeting minutes, and approval of the June 21st, 2021 city council work session minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Seven to zero, it passes. Consent agenda is finished. We move to the regular agenda. Item number nine, request city council selection of professional audit service firm and authorize the city manager to execute an auditing services agreement with the selected firm. The city council, the explanation here is the city council is to review the proposals submitted and the audit, and the audit committee's recommendation for city auditor. We have two proposals. One is $17,500 from Salt Marsh, Cleveland and Gunn, and $25,000 to Will Touser and Matt Chatzel. Do I have my motion first?
So move.
Motion by Dave Gaddis, second?
Second.
I can read this, we'll, Dave Gaddis. Thank you. Are the auditors here? Would you like to speak to us before we vote on this?
Good evening. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. My name is Janine Bittner. I'm the audit director with Salt Marsh, Cleveland and Gunn. As most of you know, we, under Salt Marsh, Cleveland and Gunn, we've performed the last two audits. And it's a pleasure to serve the city. We're happy to have you. You go for the GMOA certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting every year. And that's, that's a very compliment to, to the city and to the council. And with me tonight is Chuck Laners, who is the shareholder in charge of your account. So he drove all the way from Fort Walton Beach to be here with you tonight. Any questions I can answer or?
I have only one question on the proposal. I saw there was a price for the regular annual audit and then there's a price for a single audit. Is the single audit an optional thing, something?
No, it's, no, the single audit is if you get $750,000 worth of federal funding in the year. And that's highly unusual, although this past year, I'm not sure, because of the CARES Act, that some of our clients are actually going across the threshold, realizing that's $750,000 of expenditures.
We would need that in addition to our regular audit because of the extra funds that we receive.
If you receive that and, and spend it in the year.
Okay. Okay, what if you spend it over two years?
If you, if you're below the threshold, it's based on expenditures, not revenue.
Perfect, that's.
Good questions. Very good questions because that's come up this year for the first time in a long time.
Counsel, any other questions? Citizens, any questions? Thank you very much and thank you for the service. We're going to be voting on this in a couple of seconds.
Thank you, thank you so much, Mr. Reeves.
Anyone from the other auditing firm? There's no one here for them. Okay, that's fine. They were invited and Lynn Reeves said that they declined to come, so that's okay. We want everyone to have the opportunity. Counsel, any other comments? Citizens, any comments? Back to counsel, Dave Gaddis, last word.
I say call the question.
Okay, we will do that. So this is a request for the city council to select the professional audit service firm and authorize the city manager to execute an auditing service agreement with the selected firm. Madam Clerk, we're going to, we want to call this by person. How are we going to do this? We're not going to do a voice vote because we've got two different people. You want to just go person by person and ask who they select? Let's go person by person and ask who they select. I think I know how this might come out, but.
Councilmember Ocking?
Salt Marsh.
Councilmember Baker?
Salt Marsh.
Councilmember Gunn?
Salt Marsh.
Councilmember Otero?
Salt Marsh.
Councilmember Swob?
Salt Marsh.
Vice Mayor Gaddis?
Salt Marsh.
Mayor Manta?
Let's make it unanimous, Salt Marsh. Congratulations. You did a fine job in the past and we're glad to have you continue. So Salt Marsh will be our auditors and we'll sign that paperwork right now. Thank you and thank you for coming tonight. Thanks for driving all the way over. It took a lot of time, but thank you. Okay, next item is item 10. Authorization to award purchase of a monument sign with electronic message display and suspended bid requirements. This is a recommendation to suspend bid requirements and consider below bidders reduce cost options of $28,000 to $33,950. First, let's start with a motion.
So move.
Motion by Gunn, second. Gaddis, I think I heard. Okay, Glenn Gunn?
Yes, I believe we have the vendor.
Okay, you want to go to him first? I'm going to come back to you. You're not yielding your time, okay? We have the vendors here from the vendor.
Good evening. Thank you for having me back. I appreciate it.
Give the name and your name for the records.
Mike Olgo, here at National Sign Company, Fargo, Florida. I prepared to do some handouts. I don't know if that's necessary now. Do you want me to go ahead and follow through with that?
If you'd like, it's your time, yes, sir. If you have an extra copy to give to the city clerk so she can put it in the record,
All right, first of all, there's a couple of items that we addressed last time I was here. I just kind of refreshed everybody's memory on those. The two items I think that were a concern was the illumination and the impact that would have on neighbors. The second item, of course, was cost. So let's go over the brightness just to kind of get the impact on that again. As you know, like I referred to last time, the sign comes with automatic reduction in lumens based on atmosphere, meaning night, day, cloudy days. It also has the ability to override that. So if you feel that that is insufficient, you can override it to whatever lumens you see fit. Also, I would remind you that should a neighbor say, man, this is just too bright at midnight, you have the ability to put it on what we call sleep mode. Essentially, let's say from 10:00 at night to 6:00 in the morning, you can totally put it in sleep mode, which means there is no illumination, there's no directory, there's no verbiage on it at all. And then at 6:00 on a scheduled platform, it will come up again. So those issues, you can put it on sleep mode. So that would address any of those concerns of the neighbors who feel it might be too bright at any time at night. The other issue, of course, is the cost. And I think if you look, well, first of all, let's go with, let's go with what I handed you up. Has anybody referred to Mr. Robinson over at Reddington Shores? Has anybody called him? Referred to his sign that we talked about last time? Or has anybody gone by the sign to look at it at night during the day? Mr. Gunn, you have? You have as well. Very good. You have as well. So that's essentially what we're looking at. That sign is about the same size as the one that I'm proposing. That sign is a 3'5" by 7'9". So that's the size of that sign. And I think the sign that we're proposing is a 3'2" by 6'. So relatively the same size. So if you've gone by there, you kind of see the impact. Day run there is on par. So it's predetermined based on, like I mentioned, the light of the day, night, cloudy days, whatever. If you look at some of the photos that I have sent to you, passed out, those are just some of the items that they've displayed on their sign. I'm giving you a night and a day representation. So you can kind of see, get a plan hurricane seasons, November 1st, November 30th. Do you have emergency access permits issued here? And then I also gave you one that showed what if you didn't want color, you just wanted to go with the red, you can do that even if it's a red, green, blue colored display. And they've done both. You can do that as well. No personal property allowed on the beach, one hour after sunset until 8:00. So those are just some of the items that can be put on this display. I know just listening to Parks and Rec, some of the issues they brought up, park openings, agendas, private parties, the Jazz in the Park, all those things would work well on this display. So people driving back and forth, going to Publix, going to their home, all they have to do is look at the sign and they're exactly what's on the agenda. So that's a very good illustration of what the sign can do, just for the aspect of the Also, the blood dry, very important. Is there any questions other than, let's go over the, let's go over the money, the cost. You've got two options. So essentially, you've got one, which is, well, let me just say, the difference between the two, what we did is we reduced the base. We're going to have a concrete base, the block, similar to the, to the building. We eliminated that. We've done a stucco finish that sort of highlights the concrete. If you look at the illustration, it's got some lines, kind of indicating grout lines, If you look at the illustration, it's got some lines, kind of indicating grout lines, but it's all painted in stucco. So that was one of the things we changed. The other thing we changed, which we took off that wave top, and I know a lot of you like that. So what I did in the proposal, I gave you an extra cost to add on. It's not a $4,000 add-on. And if you look at the two options, I've indicated the cost with and without. So you've got those numbers in front of you. The difference between option one, or A, and option B, is how we address the verbiage at the bottom, community center. You've got one that's channel letters that are illuminated. You've got one, which is a push-through letter that has kind of a blow around the letters, but it's not a channel letter. It's just a push-through out of the base. So it's a very, it's multifaceted, it's very nice, and it gets good visibility, either one. So literally only two options you have here, just to show the difference in cost if you wanted to reduce it a little bit more. The visibility, what you're seeing is the sign. It's going to say community center. It's going to be lit. The main difference is you're going to be eliminating the wave and you're going to be eliminating the block base for a stucco. Either one of those, very viable, doesn't really change, other than the wave. It doesn't really change the overall dimension or the look of the sign. If you want to go with the wave, you add on additional funds. But in either event, it's much lower than what we initially presented. So we cost value this and we think we came in a very good, very good option for you all.
So what I want to do first, you finished with your important presentation. I want to see if we have any questions on Counsel. Then I also want to see if there's any questions from the City. These will just be questions while he's here. Then we'll have the debate on the Counsel and we can get our personal opinions. And so, questions only. Glenn?
You've got photographs of the digital sign of Indian Shores behind Reddington. Why are those...
Well, I put that one in there only because it's a digital display. It's full color. And I just wanted to show you what another sign could look like. We did the one at Reddington Shores. We did not do the other Reddington Indian Shores. We did not do that one. But I wanted to show you the difference between just an electronic board. It's much bigger without some of the, you know, decorative features, just a plain board. And that's essentially what it is. Now, the photographs, keep in mind, these are photographs of the digital display. It's not really representative of exactly what you're going to see. It's going to be much clearer. Photos don't really take well with digital displays. But that, I just showed you another option down the road. If you wanted to go farther and look at that, you know, that's something as well. Just another option of visibility.
Okay, so what you were trying to point out was just the plain digital display versus having it in a camp. So my question is, is having driven by both signs and looked at them, I find the Indian Shores would be a little more subdued. So is that it? Can you program?
Subdued? Define subdued.
Well, it's just not as loud and bright. So I guess maybe it's a choice of colors?
It very well could be. Or they have, they very well may have turned it down as well, because you have that ability to do that. So I can't really answer your question specifically because I don't know what they did. But it could be the colors and it could be the board. I don't know what LED board they used. They could have used a different manufacturer, obviously, that I'm not aware of. And, you know, every manufacturer has its different... We talked about nits, which is the brightness. And their nits may be a lot lower, which means it wouldn't be as bright, but it wouldn't last as long either. So there's a lot of variables. I don't know exactly what they did. But you do have the ability to tone it down. I want to make sure everybody's aware of that. So, yeah.
So two more questions. One is, they've got, Indian Shores has this beautiful monument sign. It's almost a piece of art.
Sculpture, yeah.
And my thinking is, they put that in front of the community center a long time ago. What was the timeframe when they decided to install a digital sign? Because obviously something changed where they said, maybe there's a need for...
You know, I don't know because we didn't do that. And if you look out, you go past, you go south where that intersection is going to park, there's another very decorative, similar display that they have there. It's a sculpture type art piece. And I don't know what the timeframe to the two.
But they obviously separated them because they didn't want to obstruct the art piece. So last question is, the options. If you were to go back and talk about the original proposal, like the squish on the top.
Yep.
What kind of lettering did it have? Did it have the routed letters or did it have the channel?
It had the channel.
It had the channel, perhaps. Because aesthetically, that's more pleasing, is that...
It's a matter of taste. I mean, some people like the channel letters. Preferably, I would like to do the routed one because channel letters have a little depth to them. So when you're driving at an angle, that depth, sometimes, you know, you don't see this... You'd have to almost go by it, but you'd even see it because the depth would sometimes take away some of that, you know, visibility. Where the routed is about a half an inch sticking out from the sign base itself. So it's a little bit closer to that sign base and it gets a kind of glow because it's routed and it's pushed through with half an inch acrylic. And what we do is we fire blaze the ends so that it does illuminate, like it glows. So that's, it's a nice look. So I think you'd be happy with either of my friends.
You have a question?
Yes, I have a question. Only the auto-sensing mechanics of it. Is that completely fixed, that functionality, or is the overall range of auto adjustable?
So if you're saying, well, let's go back. The auto adjustability is based on the light. So, you know, the brightness automatically adjusts accordingly. And I can't tell you if it's down four nits or five nits, just depends. But you can take that, you can, I think I answered your question, you can alter that so that it's lower whenever you want it to be lower.
Okay, so if...
You can have different range.
We're letting it on on its own. Can I set the variable of the highest and the lowest?
Right.
And so that...
It'll take into account, yeah.
That answers that question. I did ride down there to take a look at the sign. And what I noticed is the brightest periods are basically whenever they wanted it to be bright. They selected certain photos that were backdrops and it was wide open. But then there were other, I watched it for about 10 minutes. And there were other messages that were very subtle. They weren't very bright. And it was acceptable. So I think really it's all in the, in the hands of whoever is controlling it as to what it's going to look like.
It is. And remember, like I told you in last meeting, I think it's once a week on a Tuesday, you can hook up into Hioko. And they have a period of time where you can actually ask questions, you can get their tech service, you can go through an actual kind of schooling process where they teach you how to schedule things. And that's, you can do that anytime you want. So it's not like, oh, I got to do this next month and then you're on your own. You can do this whenever you feel the need. Thank you, you're welcome.
Any other Counsel questions to my care?
If I'm reading the blueprint correctly, that sign's going to be 3'3" high, 6'1" wide.
3'2" high, 6'1" wide, that's correct.
That's clear for you now.
Yep. No, now, Reddington Shores, that particular unit is 3'5" by 7'9". So that gives you a kind of difference. It's 3'5" to your 3'2", a little bit smaller. There's a 7'9" to your 6'. A little bit narrower. The font can be adjusted. The font is not predetermined. So you can adjust the font. In other words, if you want to say, let me see if any of these have it on there, I can point out here. Let's say, for instance, 6:17 a.m., you want that to be prime. You can do that very large and then 78.4, you can do that smaller. So you have the ability to change the font on anything you want. You have the ability to add lines based on the size of the font. So if you have a lot of verbiage, you can change the size to be the all-on display.
Yeah, but what my question pertains to is, how much can you put on that sign? It's about 35 miles an hour. That's 15 miles feet to the second.
Right.
Of course, these people are seeing this speed limit, so how much are you actually going to afford the rest of this?
Well, it depends on how much you have on the sign. I mean, obviously, the more verbiage, the smaller the copy and how long you have it on. You know, so you can vary that as well. You can have it on three minutes if you want or whatever, yeah. Yep.
Any other Counsel questions? City Manager, any questions? Or City Attorney? Citizens, questions only. It's not for opinion. Question? Yes. Yeah, come on up, give the name and then, and by the way, the way I'm going to do this is if you ask a question, you can come back up for an opinion. This is just to get questions right now. It's information seeking.
Jules Chandler, Business Drive West. I think you had mentioned, am I correct, that it was a spotlight where we were going to eliminate the base of the sign?
You have to answer. That's a question? Okay, you're going to, just speak into the mic so we can hear you. That's, Ms. Chandler, that's everything? That was your question?
Uh, well, yes, I'm just, well... If, if, I was under the impression or understanding that we were going to eliminate the base, the stucco part. And if that was the case, I thought, if there's nothing there, why would you distract, detract from the actual sign? And the, or to, is, does the sign face both forward or would you be able to see it at an angle coming down? Or as you're right in front of it, do you have to look quickly? So those are my two questions.
Thank you. All right, to answer the first question, it's not spotlight. What's illuminated, I don't think you have probably a copy of the sign. What's illuminated the base is the copy. That's illuminated. There's no spotlight on the base whatsoever. The illumination comes from the lettering, so you can read the lettering. To answer your second question, we originally designed it at a triangle, at a V shape, but cost was cost prohibitive, so we made it so that it's perpendicular to, to the cost line.
Any other citizen questions? John Hanzick?
John Hanzick, 22nd Street. My question is to the vendors and the Counsel. In the event we lose power, taking power for emergency signs, when we don't even have a generator for this building and this room that we're in right now is called a temporary shelter or staff can't even work, so that's a question for you all.
Thank you.
And thank you, Mr. Hanzick. That question's going to be addressed to us. But I want, does anybody have any other questions for Mr. Vogel, because he's up here? No other citizen questions? Any last round of Counsel questions we have before we debate this? Okay, thank you.
Can I respond to his question? You can, there's a comment.
Sure. I'm going to look into that because that is a good question. I'm going to see what Hioko has as far as a backup for that sign. If I remember correctly, there is something that will keep that sign on during a hurricane. And I will get back to you on that, but...
No, we're not going to, I mean, right now, as he correctly stated, we have no generating capacity on this building. So right now, I think my answer to him would be it will be going dark. But if there's another alternative and you know about it, I think that would be my best answer.
Yeah, I think there is. And I'll get back to you on that.
All right, now the point that everyone, and you're not going to leave us, right? You're going to still be here because I have a feeling with the debate, there may be more questions that get generated. This is like the highlight item of the night.
I'm here to...
Thank you. Okay, so now I'm going to open it up to Counsel debates, starting with Glenn Gunn because he had the floor. You don't have to sit up there if you don't want to. You can, okay, whatever, if you want, please feel free.
I'll save my comments if you have.
You can do that. Any other Counsel comments?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a few. Obviously, the Communications Committee recommended having this sign, having this type of sign. And we've had a number of citizens that have emailed against it, a number that have emailed for it. But I would like to say that I have spoken with a number of people in our community, especially over the holidays and events and parties and et cetera. And a lot of people are in favor of it, but sadly, they just did not really take my advice to send an email because they honestly stated that they would put a target on their back. So I think we should go with the Communications Committee's recommendation. We have beat this can and kicked this can down the road for, well, since at least October 2020, somewhere in there. And I'm just ready to move forward with it.
Counsel?
I have also heard from a lot of people, I've also read all the emails and responded. And to kind of summarize some of the comments, some people are saying, we don't need it because if you're going to use it for emergencies, we all have cell phones and, you know, TVs, we know there's a hurricane coming. So you don't really need it to tell you that. The city website has all the informations on meetings and events. Like the Parks and Rec Board person came here and saying, all these events, you want to keep it Bella Beach residents only. So the last thing we want to do is advertise Jazz in the Park on this blinking board while all non-residents go by and say, hey, I'm going to show up. And then now we're kicking them out of our event and then that's going to look bad on the city. The survey that they did prior to the Communication Board was strongly for email communication to the residents, not signage. And obviously, this, I'm just summarizing what residents have said. I've also heard that nobody knows what this building is because the sign is down. So we have no idea that this is a community center. So that's a pro for the sign to give us information on this building. Some people have said we need to move forward into the next century with technology such as digital sign as opposed to the old sign where somebody had to go out there and put it up. My only comment is, I'm kind of in the middle. I don't know which way. That's kind of what this debate's for, to help me decide which way to go because I want to represent the residents. If we do decide not to go with this sign, then my suggestion would be for that $4,000 since one of the big questions was what the heck is this building for? Is to use that $4,000 and put community center on this building, like right in front on that little rounded area because that would solve a whole bunch of those problems. Honestly, I see both sides, so I'm having trouble with this one. So nothing against you. Your sign is beautiful and I appreciate the adjustments you did. And if money wasn't an issue, we'd probably go for it, but, yeah, guys, help me decide. So let me hear your opinions.
Mr. Vogel, I'm going to weigh in and I think I've been pretty consistent with this. First off, I thank you, whether you get this or not, you did a tremendous amount of work. It's a beautiful sign, okay, in terms of its engineering and its look. It's just not something that's for me and I just don't think it's for this community. We pride ourselves when it's convenient sometimes to be this traditional 1950s, you know, Ozzy and Harry kind of community. We don't have businesses. We're, you know, all residential. And then we're going to go and put a very modern sign. And I got an email this morning, I think all the Counsel members got the same one, which showed a whole bunch of cities bigger than us that communicate, I think, as well, if not way better than us. They don't have these kind of signs. Some have no sign at all. And I agree with Robin Aki and Lynn Reeves have a proposal for this, a monument sign similar to what we have when you enter the city that says, "Welcome to Bella Beach." You could say, "Bella Beach Community Center." I really wonder if you don't know what this building is, like, maybe you're new to Bella Beach, but, I mean, this is a community center. I would hope that people have figured that out. But we certainly could put letters on the side of a building if that's the case. I don't think it, I just don't like the digital aspect of this. I don't think, Mr. Hanzick's excellent point, there is, the lights go out. Well, first off, when the lights go out, there shouldn't be people here. So we're, you know, playing to the people who stayed that didn't follow instructions. But beside that, I mean, I think there, you know, the lights could be out for a long time, too. If you look at some, you know, Panama City, when it got devastated, those lights couldn't come back. And, you know, yeah, you could put a Honda generator outside, but you better chain it down because it may not be there when you come back, you know? It might go with the next guy going over the bridge. It's a nice sign, but it's, I just don't think it's for our community. I do, I do value the aesthetics of this community. And I'm also worried on a slippery slope kind of argument that we put up a sign outside of this community center and then the condo association wants one because it'll help them advertise their rentals and then the motel wants one. And then some resident living on Coloss Way says, "I want one too" because the governor just signed a thing that says you can have home-based businesses. So why not have a little advertising business? We're going to cheapen a city. We, I remember Dave Gaddis, I remember his quote well, when we were talking about just little campaign-type signs and we were saying that, you know, they would have to stay up longer than just election season, people have a right to put them in their front door. And he said, "Well, there goes the community." And, you know, there's something to that. I mean, there's a law that says we have to let you do it. But, you know, I got to say, the community looks a lot prettier without those signs. So I just don't think it fits in. I think it sets a slippery slope for everyone. And I'm not going to be for it, but I thank you for all the work that you put in on it.
You want to make a comment?
Sure, you can, absolutely.
First of all, I'm annoyed I'm here to sell you the electronics. I was asked to present it. So whether you want the electronics or not, I understand. I understand your viewpoint and I appreciate it for the mentality of what you have here. I understand that perfectly. Again, I'm not trying to sell you electronics. So that being said, the generator thing, I would almost tell you right now, it can, it will work internally to generate. Because I think one of the things Michael Robinson liked about it was that when there was a hurricane, the sign was on. And it showed people kind of the way to go. You guys, that's totally your call. The other aspect of it, and I'm just going to pull this out here, here or there, but if a condo association wants to... Let me put it a different way. You can generate revenue on that sign by other people wanting to put information on that sign. And I understand it wouldn't necessarily be Bella. Maybe it would be, I don't know. But you could charge revenue for them to put messages on that. So that's a way to get revenue to offset the cost of the sign. So it happens all the time. So that's something to keep in mind as well. But aesthetically, again, I'm here to answer your questions, to present what I was asked to present. If you want me to come back and give you a quote for a set of letters on the building, glad to do that. We, we're a custom sign manufacturer. This is 45 years. So we can do anything you ask us to. And obviously, you know, our costs are reasonable. So, you know, I'm here to abide and to do whatever you guys want me to do. But I do think this is a beautiful sign and, you know, I think there's a lot of value in it, quite frankly.
Okay, thank you. Glenn? Glenn, did you want to go? You had your hand up first. You're passing.
Okay, I'll go ahead and speak then.
And Frank, I have you next.
I'm not sure the comment about being stuck in the 1950s mentality is representative of this entire community. If I drive around and I look at some... If I drive around and I look at some of the signs for some of the other community centers, Bel Air, Bel Os, Bel Air, they look like signs from my 1970s high school, okay? This, this whole digital sign thing was recommended by the communications and how committee comprised of residents and speaking for the residents. It aligns with our vision and our strategic plan and our vision for what a premier city looks like. It's been budgeted beforehand. This wasn't a surprise thing. We've been planning on placing the sign long ago and started building a zero score long ago. And we also had the opportunity to leverage money from the insurance companies that will pass if we don't make a decision at a time of merit. The useful life of this sign, I would anticipate is going to be in a 10, 15, 20 year timeframe. So I mean, this is a statement we are making about what Bel Air Beach is all about. It's the first thing you see when you drive into Bel Air Beach. It's the last thing you see as you exit Bel Air Beach. And I think the original proposal and the alternatives are very tasteful, artistic things and is in keeping with technology. I would be willing to bet that everybody in this room has probably purchased a car in the last five to 10 years. And we, we buy cars to match our ideas of aesthetics and what we want to represent ourselves with. We also go over the top to purchase technology and have the things that make driving the car easiest and keeping us in touch with what's going on around us. So I think you need to put some of that stuff into perspective. I mean, you buy a car, you probably spend more on your car than you're paying for the sign. Your car's going to last five to 10 years. The average car, I wrote today, is 11 to 12 years old. This sign's going to last 15 to 20 years and has a lot to say about Bel Air Beach. I think it makes a statement that we are a premier city. Again, if you go around and you look at some of the other city halls, you're looking at signs with slip-in letters that look like high school little boys showing, hey, we've got a game Saturday night at 10. No, we're a little bit more than that. It's a means of leveraging technology. The city staff can provide a flexible reprogramming of this and change messages very quickly from wherever they may be sheltering. I would anticipate them with LED lights, they probably run out of batteries for days. So I mean, I wouldn't even anticipate you need to hook it up to generate.
You know, it'll be a backup and I'll check into that.
You just have to have some sort of connectivity to this thing. I don't believe we should sub-optimize on this thing. As we keep nickel and diming this thing, we keep sub-optimizing and we're going to get to a point where we've got a sign where we stick it in front of Bel Air Beach and the neighbors are going to point at it and say, see, we told you, it doesn't look good. It doesn't fit what we're trying to say about Bel Air Beach. So what I'm saying is don't sub-optimize with this thing. We've come a long ways from the initial proposal. We've chipped a bit down. The, the sign we've got, if you were to take option B in the proposal to go with the illuminated broad letters and the electronic country, put the swish back on it, which provides some nice accent light into this thing, we're still way under the initial proposal. And I think we've got the money for it and the budget for it. And I think we need to make an important statement about our premier city. That's all I've got to say.
Frank Bankard, I think you were next.
Yeah, I'm really against unnecessary spending. When I see a sign like this, we haven't had a sign here for about a year. We've gone through two storms, a cat warm, nearly a cat. July 4th, I was over helping sandbagging. First of all, that aisle, thumbs up, creating that new sandbag container, creating them to like sitting bags in 35 minutes. But that, but going forward, all the residents, most of them have these things, okay? Just a tap of the button, you can get all the information they want right off our city hall website. I just don't see the necessity of this sign. Do we have the money for it? Surely do. But do we waste our money? Do we waste your money on unnecessary things? I don't think it's appropriate. The other thing is not to climb on your, you have to address the mayor, but I can buy a weatherproof 40 inch by 18 inch digital sign. I'm going to put that back on the road. And who's going to tell me that's true? Are we going to be a city saying what they say as I do in October, you know? It's, it's just unnecessary spending. I too have gotten a lot of emails. I too have talked to a lot of citizens on the streets. I'm getting a four to one ratio against it. I'm not for it at all.
Mr. Bankard, the council member Bankard, let me just show something. I've showed this before. I think you gave, I know I gave a copy to the city. Everybody can see this. This is a portable sign, portable digital sign. $4,500 and it is 38 by 25. You can put these all over the city, temporarily put them up and take them down. But to your point, jumping on my point, back to my point, I can buy one of these too. And I can stick this on pole and I can rent advertising. If that's what you want in your premier city, then open this door, open this Pandora's box because it's going to be a hard time for any planning board or any zoning board to say, you can't have it, but the city hall can. You can tell the people who live on Coles Way that they can't have it. Sure they can. They can have it for $4,500. And yeah, they can make a lot of advertising money because that's a really nice, heavily traveled road. And this was the first one that I got. Now, of course, this sign isn't even close in terms of the looks to your sign, but it gets the job done. And if we're concerned about an emergency or quick information, that's fine. Also, the council member Bankard's point, that committee that I keep hearing about, first off, they're an advisory committee. Where are the people elected by the people? Those people were appointed by us. They weren't elected by the people. I've heard both sides of the story. Some citizens were very nice in the way they wrote, others were not. But I'm not convinced that this is something we need. It is a waste of money. We have other things we could better spend our money on. And I just don't see it. And I don't think this makes, a sign makes you a premier community. You're a premier community when other people start calling you a premier community. Think about that. Other council? Want to open up to the citizens? Mr. Vogel, I'm just going to have you, if you, you can stay up there, but just step just a little bit aside like the sheriff did before and then.
Can I say some comment?
Absolutely. Yeah, you can do, it's going to be another round of debate here.
So to your point about these little signs you can put up, you can put up in the front lawn, first of all, you have to go out and remotely put it, just like you have to slide in a letter, you have to go out there and type it in a cord. The first wind that comes down, comes down to bite, it's going to be on the ground. Number two, it won't last. I guarantee you that. These things are not built to last, they're not commercial. The LEDs are not quality. You're going to have some boards go out before others. So what you're looking at for $5,000 is exactly what you're going to get for $5,000. And you're going to have those all over the community. Talk about an ice sore. That would be an ice sore. Plus, when you start having them blowing down the road, that's going to be a problem. So to your point, I understand what you're saying. It's a cheap way to do it, but it's inefficient and I think it's going to jump up to community and all these things that people want to grab. Plus, how do you know if zoning would allow to have individuals put up these LED boards? And how are you going to run? You know, I'm going to stick an electronic cord out there? I don't know. So to your point, I understand what you're saying. It's costly, but if you look at the big picture, you've got little displays that people want to put up, but they're going to, they're going to fail. They're going to fall down, they're going to, they're going to have to repair them, replace them, not efficient. And to your point about people using their phones, you're absolutely right. We're in an age of technology. People can go on Google and look up whatever they want, but they have to have the mindset to get on Google, to get on the website, go through, scroll what they want, get what they want and remember it. Out here, you have people going to Publix all the time. You have people going to, to eat out, to come back. All they have to do is look at that sign. They don't have to think about getting on their phone. There it is. And Robert, to your point, you can only put on what you want to put on. If people don't want the Jazz Festival on there, don't put it on. Put on what is, come along with what is good for the community. So you have all these options. Do whatever you want. Illumination, whatever you want. It's going to have a standby battery, so it's not going to go out. There's just so many pluses to this thing. It's really, aesthetically, it's beautiful. And I think once people see it, they would probably agree.
I'm now going to open this to city council, to city citizens' comments. Mr. Vogel, I'm just going to have you step right, yeah, right about there and then you come up here. If you spoke before and asked a question, that doesn't count. So certainly you have three minutes of time here.
June Vansgo, 7th Street, Bel Air Beach. On April 23rd of 2019, we did a constant contact survey.
Get ready to the mic, please.
We did a constant contact survey, which I have a copy of if anybody wants to see it. And communications was only at 20.8% of concern for the citizens. This is a copy that was given to me by the city manager, Juanos Park Chair. Okay, we have this, other forms. This is dated February 18, 2020. The community center is only used 25.6% of the time. 25.6. And we're spending money to advertise it as a community center when it's only being used 25.6% of the time. I remember our citizen Steve Marsh saying that after a storm, that the power went out for some of the residents down on Denada, okay? And then he wanted to bring them down here and let them sit in the air for a little while and they were denied. Community center? I don't think so. But the other thing is we do not have a generator. I personally came here one time to bring up some forms and the power was out and the employees had to leave early, even though the storm was gone. We could not operate as a city because we didn't have a generator. So how can we, which is supposed to be our number one thing, is the safety of our citizens in this community, not have a generator and worry about a sign before a generator? Lastly, I remember members on this council saying we had to fix the flooding on our streets. That's why we could not take a matching park grant that was being given to the city that was awarded because we had to fix the flooding first. But we're worrying about a sign. I just don't agree. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to press a moment.
After the citizen, oh, that's her. Other citizens? I see no other hands. Citizen comments are closed. Back to you, Glenn Dunn.
With respect to the matching park grants, I mean, that keeps surfacing, especially when it comes up with budget discussions. And the missing point or the point that's completely left out of the context of that thing was we were willing to match a $200,000 grant with no follow-on money. And we were handcuffed to those changes for the next 25 years. We did, we had no clue on the demographics of who we're going to use those changes to the park. We had no clue on what the recurring cost we wanted to meet for that $200,000 expenditure to change the park. And once again, it's just because somebody was going to match funds, well, we were getting free money, $200,000. So we were going to take $200,000 out of our budget, not being able to ask questions about what does that cost us, you know, current out use to support and maintain those facilities? If we change our lines because certain things aren't being used by these changes in the park, we're handcuffed to it. You can't just eliminate those things. So at the time, I think that was very sound, responsible stewardship of the budget process. Getting on your phone, just like he talked about, that's the distinguishing difference between push-pull communications. Push communications, you drive by a sign, it's in your face. Hey, you have barrier items of being forced to evacuate. No matter what it is. Unless you either win to program, you go on your phone or hit a reverse 911 call, you don't get that information.
How many text messages did you get from Penelope's County with the upcoming storm?
I don't know.
Okay, that's my point.
Is that the point?
Wait a minute. The other point is, and I did a lot of signage in my career. Signs are great for about a week or two and then they fall into the landscape. The typical citizens, they just drive by them, they ignore them, they don't even see what's on them. So the sign that he proposes, and he did put a lot of work into it, but that's what sales are, okay? Sometimes you make the sales, sometimes you don't.
Not complaining.
Okay. What I'm trying to say is, I think it's all going to look great for a week or two and then most of the citizens are going to say, huh, they'll just drive right by. More people are interested in getting first to go over the Coles Way when that two lanes narrow down. And yet, when they're coming in, they're more interested in whether they're going to go left and getting in which lane to go left or right. We have a great county that informs us all of emergencies. I got notice to hate for a thunderstorm, okay? Phone call and text message. We don't need a sign. As you say, which way do I go? Well, any idiot that lives in this city that goes west during a storm, they got bigger problems than a sign, all right? You go that way, all right?
Hang on, I want to, we have two people having a conference. Let's see if anybody else wants to speak. Anyone else? Do you, Glenn Dunn?
Two, two last things. One is, it, it was interesting you brought up the notice without you. So I mean, you put the cabinet up here, if there's no message to be signed, hey, the screen's blank and it's black. And you have the flexibility of using it at a later time, in the event of an emergency or you need to get some timely information out. So I mean, that is a flexible point there. I think we're at the point where we could argue this thing and, and I would like to just make a proposal and a motion.
I don't know, the person speaking down here, who wants to speak down here? Go ahead, Robert.
No, I mean, I get what everybody's saying, but if we're going to, again, part of me, some of this talk seems hypocritical because you're like, we're talking about low sign, get you information, it's in your face about things going on, but then we don't want people to know about things going on in the city because we don't want other people coming to our city. We're not welcoming of other people in our city. If you're talking about putting in $30,000 toward a sign for emergency uses only that we're going to use once, hopefully never, maybe once or twice a year about a storm, I mean, do we need $30,000 sign to warn people there's a hurricane coming, they should get out? I mean, if we were going to be advertising events and all this stuff that we do because we're so active and we're so inviting and we want people, we want people to know about what's going on in our city, then yeah, I'd be the first one up here like, yeah, let's do it, we need it, we got to get it out. But you're talking about a premier city. We want this respectful, sophisticated city, but then you're talking about color, size in your face. So again, it's ying and yang here. You've got your one moment, you're over here, the next moment you're over here, just the arguments are just confusing. So if we're only going to use this mostly, we're thinking emergencies, then I think an idea of a temporary sign, you put it up saying, hey, warning, you're flood zone A, everybody get out, that would be more effective than this beautiful sign. And I think something more like a monument sign or just community center written on the thing would suffice. But again, I'm still in fact, so.
Glenn, I'll come back to you and I'm going to say something because you've got about three comments here. You have the last word because this is your motion. So, you know, I look at some of the surrounding towns and I certainly consider them as quality as us. Bel Air Bluffs, they don't have a digital sign. Bel Air, I don't think they have a sign at all. You know, Bel Air Shore, they don't have a sign, they don't even have a city hall. So, you know, a sign doesn't make your city. Again, nice sign, you know, maybe in the right city, this might be perfect, you know? Maybe Indian Rocks, it looked like they had an old fashioned school kind of sign like kind of Colson. And that might fit in well over there for their type of environment. I think it does, but I just don't, again, take it, come to me here. So go back to Glenn Dunn.
Yeah, two, couple, two, couple things. I stood in front of the signs at Reddington Shores. I stood in front of the sign at Indian Shores and it wasn't just about emergency evacuations or whatever. There were some public information messages on there. Beaches, don't leave your stuff on the beach. If you leave it on the beach, it's going to be confiscated. Hey, it's that time of year, and you should get your emergency access tags for your car, if you haven't done that already. So there's a lot of public information going on. It's not just, hey, head east if there's an evacuation instead of west. Okay, so there are a lot of public information messages there. And we are, this is a arterial roadway here. So it's not only our residents looking at it and being engaged with our neighboring municipalities. There are people coming down through Clearwater Beach, there are people coming up through Indian Rocks Beach to access the causeway to and from work. So the word's getting out everywhere. So I mean, it's not just the residents saying, I mean, I'm taking it in kind of a broader scope. We're providing a public service to our neighboring communities as well. So, I don't know, does anyone have comments?
Can I make a comment? Um, I'm on council, I'm gonna come back to you, okay? Robinaki?
No, I mean, I hear what you're saying, and I agree, but just, you know, this has nothing to do with my own personal opinion, but I'm just going to base what the majority of the residents have been saying and their feels, and then just ever since I've been on council, the feeling and the comments from residents about our communicating, we're not welcoming, we don't want to share the love. I mean, so what are we gonna say? You know, don't leave your stuff on the beach, leave your umbrella in the car? I mean, I mean, what are we gonna say? You know, we're not saying, hey, come to our beaches. We should say, beaches are for residents only, all else stay away. I mean, that's not gonna make us look premier, that's gonna make us look... Maybe, maybe that's how we wanna look, I don't know. That's not how I personally wanna look, but I... Look, a lot of people are thinking it, I'm just that person. When you think it, I'll just say it, because I have nothing to lose. I'm just gonna tell you like it is. This, this is the feeling I'm getting. We don't want other people here, we only want residents. You can't bring your umbrella to the beach. We don't want, I mean, I don't think a sign is going to be used for public announcements, because I don't think we have anything to say. Do I want to be more technological? Yes, if this, when this first came up, I was all for it. I was like, yeah, this is great, it'll look good, blah, blah, blah. But then all these citizens are coming to me and emailing me, and I'm like, ew, that's obviously not the feel that the citizens want. And I'm up here to represent the citizens, not my own personal, even if it conflicts with the majority of the citizens. So that's all I'm saying. I'm not trying to pick on anybody, I'm just saying like it is of how the, what the citizens have told me. And I mean, this, even citizens that are my patients have talked to me on this in a professional capacity. Instead of talking about themselves, they've heard the sign, so I'm just saying.
Well, if you live between First and 18th Street, you can't take anything to the beach angle. So there's no need to put anything on the sign. Are we gonna put on a sign if we do pass it? You know, beach umbrella is allowed between First and 18th Street? Are we gonna put on the sign, potential residents, you're not allowed to have beach umbrella? Because I'll tell you one thing, that would be a big drawback, I believe, to any potential buyer. I mean, if we're gonna inform people, let's inform. Anyone on the side, it's quiet on this side?
Yeah, I'll add to that. I was on the communication committee, and, yep, I'm aware that there was a survey that was sent out. Um, the sign was not the number one form of communication, I'll admit that. But I will say that there were, there was a number of people that said, yes, that's what I want. I drove past the old sign, and that's where I got what was going on in City Hall. I saw it, every time I would drive by that sign, I would look at it and see, okay, am I missing anything? What's going on tonight? Because that was, that was a good place. I didn't have to pick up my phone while I was driving down the street to try to figure out what was happening in City Hall. I know that there's many people, that they are on their phone all the time, driving around. We know that's not safe, they do it anyway. I can think of some people in this room that I've seen doing it. But, you know, not gonna point anyone out. I'm just saying that just because it's not the number one form of communication requested by the citizens, the residents of Bel Air Beach, does not mean it's not going to be used. It's just another form. And whenever I was on that committee, we were trying to creatively come up with as many ways possible of communicating with our residents. If there's one form of communication that's leaving a few people out, because maybe they don't use their phone, maybe they're not computer savvy, maybe they just don't understand the technology, well, why should we leave them out? And that's all I've got to say.
So here's what I'm gonna do. Mr. Vogel, I'm gonna have you make your last comment. I'm gonna open it up to anybody else who wants to make a last comment, but the last final comment was the person who brought the motion under our rules. Okay, so one more round, for you.
Thank you. First of all, just to be clear, I'm not here to sell you this sign. That is totally your decision. I'm here as a request to provide you with a design capable of communicating with L and D. And I did that, I think, in a very conscientious, beautiful sign at a good price. That's all I'm gonna say about that. I'm not here to promote this sign necessarily. Secondly, you're all talking about, well, you know, what can't we? We don't want to put on emergency, we need that, we need that. Well, think about the community. Think about discussions of what you do want to promote to this community. What do you want to reach out and have a positive influence on the community through what you put on the sign? I mean, there's a lot of positive things you could probably all think about, which you're all talking about, but we don't want this, we don't want people to know that, you know, there's heat here. Well, what do you want to promote? This is your community. So you should promote it as best you want to promote this community. And you have a great tool to do it with. Do you have to do it all the time? No. You can, you can, you can go dark, you can just sleep for weeks. Something comes up, put it on there. But you have the ability to do it, where now you don't. So now you have to have somebody think about, go on their phone. I understand that, I do the same thing. Uh, but you have to be cognizant of, okay, gosh, now I gotta think about it, now I gotta get on it, now I gotta scroll down. Or you can just, you know, a couple times will pass, and the information you want is there. You can put phone numbers, call City Council if you have any questions, or call whatever, if you have any questions. It's available instantaneously. So that's first point. Secondly, I really wish, I don't think anybody did this, although I offered it many times, to call Michael Robinson at Reddington Shores. He and I had just the same discussion. He came, we was with the same problems with people in the community. It's gonna be too dry, it's this and that. He resolved that. They have a beautiful sign. I wish we would have called him to get the questions and answers from him, how he resolved it with his community. I think you might feel a little differently, perhaps. Unfortunately, you do not, but I wish you would.
Thank you again, Mr. Vogel. All right, I'm gonna start on my left here. Last round of comments, you don't have to make any comment, but anyone here, unless, unless he's not speaking to that mic.
I would agree with, you know, what Dave said. The old sign, you got information from. We're not trying to sell anything, we're trying to provide information to our residents, to our citizens. Um, you know, since that, since the old sign went down, you feel lost driving by here, you know? When's the next meeting for this, when's the next meeting for that? I think it's very valuable for that. Um, and, you know, during storm season and stuff, yes, we can put, you know, signs up, get your entrance, your re-entry permit and stuff like that. But just to have information for the citizens, yeah. City Hall's gonna be closed on Friday for this and such a date. And, you know, they're closing at noon or something like that. I think it's very valuable for information. I think it's a very tasteful sign, and I'm beyond favor.
You will, it's on this side. Go over to this side.
Well, as Mr. Vogel says, you can put phone numbers on it, um, information. As Mr. Bannister says, you know, you'll all be clicking on the phone while you drive. And so now we'll have a patent paper in the cars, all the right numbers. So I'm totally against it, it's unnecessary.
I'm gonna echo what you said. Take that money, put it towards that generator. That benefits a lot more people, particularly if we ever get hit with a hurricane. This becomes a area where we can have people cool and stay temporarily, at least during the daytime. Not that it's a shelter, but it's someplace where people can come to, and they weren't able to come to here last time. Glenn Gunn, last word, I'm gonna call it.
Yes, I'd like to amend item 10.
Okay.
To authorize the purchase of a monument sign with electronic message display, specifically option B, with the wave add-on tunnel cost of $32,500 as specified on the international sign proposal date, June 30, 2021.
You got a second for that?
Second.
Okay, we'll open that up to discussion. Do you do first?
Can I have that? Call the question?
No. If you want to call the question, that'll be your third motion. You wanna call the question?
Do we need citizen comment?
We need to, I... Do you wanna call the question, yes or no?
Let's go through the protocol, Mr. Gunn.
Go through the protocol, okay? So we're on council comments now, to your amendment. Okay, we tried to even bother to break the whole thing down, but you'll give it to me again. Um, basically, you're picking the most expensive option. So for all the concerns about the money, let's spend the most amount of money. Okay. Um, if you wanna make, if we're gonna have the amendment, we have to vote on that proposal, and we have to have discussion. So anyone on council have any other comments besides myself before I open it up for citizen comments on the amendment only?
I do.
Yes.
I don't like the wave.
Don't like that?
I don't like the wave.
You don't like the wave?
Four thousand dollar wave. I, 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 you know, it kinda seems like I know which way we're leaning, and if I, we're gonna get picky about wave or no wave, I don't like the color blue. I don't like that blue, I think it looks too garish, too in-your-face, and I don't think that it matches the building well, and maybe something more viewed of a blue. Just saying, if you're calling details into this amendment, let's talk details.
You can make another amendment, we could have 100 amendments. We could just make so many amendments that we won't be able to follow. But yeah, I mean, I'm not gonna tell anyone they can't make an amendment. Absolutely, you could make an amendment to get rid of the blue, you could get an amendment to make it a half an inch bigger, do whatever you want.
Yeah, well, I, I don't like the wave. I think we could save that $4,000, and I don't think we need the wave. And we're gonna start debating shape and sizes, and I'm gonna go outside and get my bag and then, so I can interchange my stuff while we're doing this. I, it's in my car, I won't go get it. Ask for recess for five minutes.
Anyone else who's wanna go back? Glenn, first round, Frank Banker?
Um, $40,000.
But Frank, I can't, Frank, that mic is sideways, and you're two feet away.
$4,000 for the wave. Where are we getting the total from insurance? Did we get a hard number on that yet?
Mr. Reeves?
Well, they, they told us if we purchase a sign, they will reopen it. They paid us the $4,000 already. So what they had told me initially was somewhere around 10.
My experience...
Could be a little bit more.
My experience with insurance companies is, they'll pay out what they owe, and then they'll sock it to you in the long run. So we're gonna pay back that $4,000, $10,000 in the next councilway if they're on school. Inherent or mess.
First round? Second round, Glenn Gunn?
Yeah, I think my point is, I'm putting something out there. Let's make a decision on this thing and move forward. If that's not what you want, fine. But it's time to fish or cut bait on this thing instead of arguing and adding for that. So I've made a proposal, I've amended the initial line in item 10, and I'm saying, it's option B, with the wave, and the eliminated dotted letters. And $3,500, which is significantly less than the initial proposal. So we thought the initial proposal was very nice, until we found that we saw the price tag. Well, we've seen a huge adjustment on this thing. And it's been budgeted for, we're gonna get leverage off of our insurance money, and I'm just saying, let's make a decision.
Well, I'm not opposed to making a decision, but that was a very specific decision. I'm more, I'm more for, let's make a decision, and then if it's a yes vote, then we can figure out which option?
Well, no, I guess what I'm saying is, let's not sub-optimize. Let's, let's go with the Cadillac version of this thing, because I think it fits the, the ideal of Bel Air.
I know, but you're going from, hey, let's buy a new car, to let's buy a Cadillac 2022 with...
And hang on, count the words a bit, Tom.
You know, and the spoiler, this, I'm just saying, maybe we should do a little more general, like, do you want a sign? Or do we not? If it is a yes, then we can get into the weeds with the...
I guess my point is, is that we decided, we've been, we've been arguing this for how many, a year now? And I'm just saying, you've got information before us, I've made a motion, I'm ready to move forward. I'm with what you mean, we need to vote for it.
Okay. Any other council comments? Okay, I'm opening it up to city comments. Now, this is only on the amendment. The amendment is to, if I got this right, Mr. Gunn, option B, with the wave add-on, $33,500, correct? Okay, so that's the amendment. That just means that we're gonna amend what we vote on. Because right now, this thing says $28,000 to $33,950. So he's saying, forget about $28,000 to $33,950. He wants option B, wave add-on. That's what I wanna hear comments on, if any citizens have any. Mr. Hanson, come up, and if you have a question, ask us, and we'll straighten it out for you. Maybe, if we can. Go ahead.
John Henson, 22nd Street. So I can only talk about the motion as amended. So my comment is this, I've been following this old scenario forever. And in recent meetings, the city manager warned we would get $4,000 minimum, period. Or we could get up to $14,000 if we place the sign. So we were playing with this little thing forever, and now he just states, city got $4,000. I would wager to say, the chances of getting the other $10,000 if the council votes for a sign, might be slim to none. Should've thought about that, instead of dragging the anchor.
Other citizen comments? I'm gonna back to council on the amendment. Last word, Glenn, on the amendment. If you have one.
If the protocol's ready, will you call the question on the end?
It is ready. So, and Glenn, please correct me if I state this question wrong. We're voting on the amendment, the amendment does not mean you're voting for the sign. It means you're voting for us to consider this amendment. So the amendment on, before us right now is to not go with a range of $28,000 to $33,950, but instead to select, I'm looking at international sign, June 30th, 2021, quote to Kyle Reefer, option B as in boy, and it is the wave add-on, $33,500 before any law sets.
The wave is illuminated, by the way.
I'm sorry?
Wave is illuminated. You can, you can eliminate the illumination if you don't want it.
The wave, just the wave add-on. He gets it all, if he wants it all, he gets it all. We're gonna eliminate it, this, we're gonna have this go ball, we're gonna have the whole thing. So, did I say that correctly?
Yes, sir.
Madam Clerk, I want this called by individual, please. Okay, no reason, we've taken enough time on your vote, so start it however you'd like. This is on the amendment only, this is to amend what we're gonna vote on, and then I'm gonna call the question right after that, if this passes, or if it doesn't pass, either way.
Councilmember O'Chara?
Aye.
Councilmember Swob?
Aye.
Councilmember Aki?
No.
Councilmember Banker?
No.
Councilmember Bannister?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bannister?
Aye.
Mayor Hanson?
No. So the amendment passes four to three. I think we're finished with debate on that when you call the amendment at the end. Okay, so now we're gonna call the question, unless anybody has any last words. No? Okay, good. So what is before us right now is item 10 as amended. So, what is before us right now is item ten as amended. It's an authorization to award purchase of monument sign with electronic message display and suspended requirements as amended to include option B, item, item with the wave add-on, thirty-three thousand five hundred dollars. That's from the June thirtieth, 2021 quote from International Sign. A yes vote gets that sign. Madam clerk, same deal. Please call it by person. This is where they can pass the sign or reject the sign.
Councilmember Otero?
Aye.
Councilmember Swob?
Aye.
Councilmember Aki?
No.
Councilmember Baker?
No.
Councilmember Mann?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gaddis?
Aye.
Mayor Hanson?
No. So, it passes four to three. We will be buying the option B, thirty-five thousand, three hundred fifty-dollar wave add-on sign.
Thirty-three five.
Thirty-three five, yep. Yep. So, that's that. Thank you very much. And I'm sure the city manager will be working out the particulars with you. Thank you very much. Okay, thanks. Anybody need a break? We're at seven forty-nine. Getting, moving this one along here. All right, item eleven. Consideration of Resolution 2021-05, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Beller Beach, Florida, providing for the approval of a seawall manual pursuant to section ninety-one thirty-eight of the Beller Beach City Code and establishing an effective date. This is consideration to adopt a seawall manual for seawall specifications applicable to seawalls within the subdivision of the city. First, I need a motion.
So moved.
Second? Second. That was a big swill. Glenn Dunn?
I'll defer to the city manager's explanation.
Yes, Mayor. Council, we sent you, we did the adjustments that you requested. Councilmember Baker had asked us to put in, so it's based in the natural state, and we put the disclaimer in. One thing I want to mention in your packet, the date should say twelfth July, not seventh June. There's a typo there, so at the bottom of the resolution. And I did not receive any additional comments about the seawall.
So, what, did it say twelfth of July?
Yeah, it should say twelfth of July.
It's a minor change. We can make that, that's not a problem.
Well, I'm just pointing it out. Because we had this one last week.
That's not changed on the copy that I'm going to sign if this passes?
Pardon me?
It's not changed on the copy that I'm going to sign if it passes?
No, we'll have to, actually, you'll sign, Patty, you'll have to adjust this.
Patty, I'm going to do this, just in case I miss it. You're assigned this fast at the end. You have my authorization to make that change on page one. It says pass and adopt. It should say twelfth day of July. If I miss it, you have my permission to make that single correction. Thank you. Okay. Anything else, Mr. Reeves? Any other council comments? Mr. Reeves, the entire disclaimer is in there, right? Confirm that again with me, right?
Yes. It says at the top.
Okay, that's what we want to have. Any other, any citizen comments? Back to council. Glenn Dunn, any last words?
Call the question.
You got it. Consideration of Resolution 2021-05, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Beller Beach, Florida, providing for the approval of a seawall manual pursuant to section ninety-one thirty-eight of the Beller Beach City Code and establishing an effective date. Resolution, Madam clerk, please call it.
Councilmember Mann?
Aye.
Councilmember Otero?
Aye.
Councilmember Swob?
Aye.
Councilmember Aki?
Aye.
Councilmember Baker?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gaddis?
Aye.
Mayor Hanson?
Aye. It passes seven to zero. The city manager, you will begin issuing these manuals, right? They'll be available. Moving on to item twelve. Consideration of Resolution 2021-07, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Beller Beach, Florida, a resolution of the City Council of Beller Beach, Florida, approving the fiscal year 2021, non-add-bellorm assessment role for the Bellevue Estates Island Assessment Area, providing for authority, providing for definitions, providing for findings, directing certification of the assessment role to Pinellas County Tax Collector, approving a credit against the assessment as a result of the actual project cost being lower than the construction cost estimate used to calculate the assessment for property, providing for severability and providing for an effective date. Explanation, approving the assessment role and approving a credit against the assessment as a result of the actual project cost being lower than the construction cost estimate. First, I needed a motion.
So moved.
Big swill. Second, second, Madam Otero, big swill.
I'll defer to the city manager.
Uh, the city manager, Reeves?
Yes, Mayor and Council, this is an annual resolution we do. This year, it's got some good news for the residents that are being assessed. It's changing their previous assessment from sixty-nine hundred and twelve dollars to thirteen hundred and thirteen for certain units, and then lowering to the twelve sixty-seven assessment to eleven hundred and three, and the four hundred, approximately four hundred and nineteen dollar assessment to three eighty-three. So, this will, we've already submitted the preliminary assessment role to the county. And then we'll have to submit this plus the final assessment role before September fifteenth. So, this is just annuals, housekeeping for the assessment.
Thank you. Any other comments from the council? Citizens, any comments? Back to the council. Any comments? Last word?
Call the question.
I will. Consideration of Resolution 2021, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Beller Beach, Florida, a resolution of the City Council of Beller Beach, Florida, approving fiscal year 2021-2022 non-add-bellorm assessment role for Bellevue Estates Island Assessment Area, providing for authority, providing for definitions, providing for findings, directing certification of the assessment role to Pinellas County Tax Collector, approving a credit against the assessment as a result of the actual project cost being lower than the construction cost estimate used to calculate the assessment for property, providing for severability and providing for an effective date. Resolution, Madam clerk, please, if you will.
Councilmember Otero?
Aye.
Councilmember Swob?
Aye.
Councilmember Aki?
Aye.
Councilmember Baker?
Aye.
Councilmember Mann?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gaddis?
Aye.
Mayor Hanson?
Aye. Passed at seven to zero. Item thirteen. Authorization to enter into an agreement with Spectrum for undergrounding of the overhit cable wires along the west side of Gulf Boulevard from Harrison Avenue to Twelfth Street. Explanation, authorization for fifty-one thousand, six hundred seventy-six dollars and sixty-nine cents to complete the west side of the Gulf Boulevard beautification undergrounding project. Motion?
So moved.
Yes, swill. Second? Second, Ramon Aki, Rita?
I'll defer to the city manager.
Yes, Mayor and Council, this is part of our undergrounding project. This is funding that the penny for Pinellas money is providing us to underground the wires. This is an area that we have some little pockets, and you'll notice the majority of it is at the north end of town on the west side of the road. We've got a couple of little pockets of Spectrum wires we need to eliminate. And currently, if you drive down Gulf Boulevard, the only thing that's left going across the road is Spectrum wires, and that'll help finish this project up. We do have money from, this money for this actually is from the penny three money that will expire in September, so we need to expend it to move forward with the project.
I have a question for you. When do we do the east side of Gulf Boulevard? Wires that I have to look at and everybody else has to look at?
Well, I thought you wanted those wires.
No, I don't. I'm going to go to you.
Uh, we're in the process. I have Spectrum's numbers back already for the, well, actually, the Spectrum wires from first through Twelfth Street on the east side will be gone. The only thing that will be left is the electric. And then I have Spectrum's quotes for the rest of the way through the city on the east side. I have had an initial number, which I told you a couple months ago from Duke, and they are working on reprogramming that money and trying to figure out if we do it like we did with Bellevue Estates Island, where we went out and got our own boring company. So, they're going to be bringing back a price for that. So, the next thing on the agenda, you've got to amend the budget because to put that, the money in the penny four has given us this year. So, we're working on it.
I didn't hear her date, though. I just heard.
You got to get, you got to get, you know, it's negotiating with Duke Energy right now. And once we kind of firm those numbers up, then we'll be able to know how we're going to start, move forward.
What's your deadline to spend the next, you said September's the money on, the deadline to spend this money, the next cool money that comes through? What will be your deadline to spend on that?
We've got five years of collection. And I would always ask for rollover, which I will be doing here very shortly to the county. I have to give them a projection for what we will spend in this fiscal year of penny four money, which just started in October.
All right. Any other questions on number thirteen? Citizens, any comments? No citizen comments? I'll come back to council. Last words? Okay, the question before us is, item thirteen, authorization to enter into an agreement with Spectrum for undergrounding of the overhit cable wires along the west side of Gulf Boulevard from Harrison Avenue to Twelfth Street. I'll take this as a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Passed at seven to zero. Item fourteen. Request approval of fiscal year 2021 capital projects, fund budget amendment for the increase to the Gulf Boulevard beautification project. Funding for the budget amendment of three hundred thirty thousand, one hundred fifty-one dollars is for the Pinellas County penny four undergrounding inter-local agreement, which was signed after budget had been approved. So, first, a motion?
So moved.
Big swill. Second?
Second.
Second, Glenn Dunn. Discussion, Rita?
I'll defer to the city manager.
Just, Mayor and Council, the amount of money, three hundred thirty thousand, one hundred fifty dollars is the combination of Beller Beach and Beller Shore's funding, which I've confirmed that they're, we're going to keep doing the same process. So, over the next five years, we'll have a total a little over four million dollars. So, this will be, this first year, because we didn't, what I'm asking for is approval to just amend the capital budget. This is a reimbursable, we spend it, they give it back to us. But they're pretty good about returning it to us, so we aren't out of pocket very long.
Get a little bit back, right?
Yes, one hundred percent.
Council, any questions or comments? Citizens, questions or comments? Back to council. Item fourteen before us is a request for approval of fiscal year 2021 capital projects, fund budget amendment for the increase to the Gulf Boulevard beautification project. If you vote for this, you're going to amend the budget to three hundred thirty thousand, one hundred fifty-one for Pinellas County penny four undergrounding inter-local agreement, which was signed after the budget had been approved. Yes vote gets this done. I'll take a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passed at seven to zero. It's like a record. It's eight o'clock, and we're getting into the unfinished business. Okay, do we have any unfinished business? Hearing any? City attorney? Any comments?
City attorney report. Today, I sent the revised sign ordinance to city council members, and it's my understanding in the not-so-distant future of the workshop, that will be discussed again. There's, you know, no more changes I made. I tried to do my best to make it exceptionally clear what I had changed and made comments, and I'll be certainly receptive to hearing the further comments that you have. That's the first thing. Second thing is, Lynn and I have continued to talk and work on doing the changes to the city code that were recommended by the review committee. And the third thing is, I wanted to do an educational thing that will take about two minutes. So, this I had prepared for the last meeting, but that meeting went late, so I will tell you what now. This is the progression of things that I consider when making an amendment to the ordinances and the code. This is what the progression of things I would recommend that y'all consider when you were looking at an issue. And again, it will only take two minutes. First thing is, an amendment's the code or an evolutionary process. There's typically a change in the law that we have to comply with, or there's a technology change. Those are the two things that lead to the evolution. Next point is, what is the issue? You should define it. The better defined it is, the less nebulous it is, and the easier it is to discuss. Third thing that I always consider is, does the city have jurisdiction to address this issue? Or is jurisdiction with the county, state, or federal government? At times, citizens are very interested in making a change in law, and there ought to be a law to do something, except it's not your law to change. So, that's something we always should consider. Next point is, is there an existing legal standard in the city's code of ordinances? If you're amending it, there probably is a standard, but that, to me, is an obvious starting point. The next point is really getting down to the deliberative process. How important is the proposed amendment? And, you know, you can spend a tremendous amount of time debating things, and y'all have to decide how important a certain issue is. And some issues I would submit to you are things that you probably should consider another day compared to other things that may be a lot more pressing. Next thing is, discuss the issue at a workshop and reach consensus on the proposed amendment. That, to me, is the far better way of doing it, because I think, you know, with seven of you, there's going to be several different points of view, and it's good for you to, in a workshop session, be able to share your perspective on a given topic. Next thing is, once there's a consensus, that's the staff, which is primarily Lynn, Patty, and myself, would review what other cities have done to address this type of issue, so we're, we are efficient and we don't reinvent the wheel. There's, with municipal, I can access, and so can you, anything, or almost anything in the state of Florida in municipal government. And to me, that's a common starting point, is to look and at least get an idea how other cities have addressed this issue. The final point is to consider an ordinance which contains the amendment to the code. And that would be, that could be after you do a second workshop, where you consider the actual document at a workshop. So, those are some things I would suggest would be prudent for y'all to roughly follow that, progression of events when considering amendment to the city code. And I'll stand for any questions.
Counsel? Mr. Riley, I had one thing that I brought you in passing the other day. And I'm throwing it out there because it's something that the city is going to have to do, not necessarily you alone. But our governor and our legislature was quite busy this session, and I believe we have close to ninety new bills, some of which affect our city and affects our code and affects the way we've been doing business. And, you know, while we're doing other things, the Tallahassee's doing other things too. And we have to make sure that our stuff is up to date. I'm going to give you one of them, okay? Because I was going to, and I'm going to bring this. So, Madam clerk, I'm going to tell you now, I'm going to bring this at some point in time, okay? We never had the right, as a city, to prohibit motorized bicycles on the beach, because when they tried to, in Tallahassee, encourage people to ride bicycles, they said, a bicycle's a bicycle, and that includes a motorized bicycle. Well, all the beach mayors were screaming because people are whizzing by at, you know, forty miles an hour on the beach. So, they passed a, a ability for us to change that and prohibit that. And we should take advantage of that before they change their minds again. So, stuff like that is in there. It's for us as a council. I mean, we certainly can debate it, just because I say do it doesn't matter. Everybody here wants motorized bicycles, but most people don't. And this would be our opportunity to change it. Some of the other stuff, home-based businesses are now legal. So, we need to change our code, and we need to look at how we're going to be affecting stuff and how we're going to be affecting the community. So, I give this to you. I know you're aware of it. I, you spoke about maybe using the League of Cities for a summary. I think that's a great starting point. But I just want this council to be aware, this is our job, aided by our city attorney, to bring this stuff up to date. These codes need to be revised. And of course, all ninety don't necessarily affect us, but some of them do.
Well, I'll just add to what you've said. There are periodically mandates from Tallahassee that the legislature's determined that the cities have to do something, and you're stuck with figuring it out. And what's worse is, you're often stuck with the tasks that are really hard and you're not paying for it. So, you know, how many of those are in the ninety? I really don't know off the top of my head. But the two examples that you have given are things that certainly will affect the city of Beller Beach, and it is the sort of thing that you should take into account, because one of the worst spots you can be is if there's a new state law that's applicable to the city, and you, you know, don't do anything about it, and you're in conflict with the state law, which is probably not the best place to be. A lot of the laws give you an opportunity to phase things in, but some of them don't. So, uh, when you and I talked about it briefly, the, the point I made was the Florida League of Cities has been active for, you know, since their inception in trying to be the liaison, and I, my expectation is they, they have periodically up, give updates of summary, a summarized version of things. Uh, I, what I do not want to do is, you know, me dive in and read ninety different bills, that's a complete waste of time. Before a better application of time is to start with a summary, and then y'all do things methodically, uh, with your charter review and your code review, that's the way I would suggest you do this, although you don't need a committee for it. You need a summary to start with, and then decide which ones you're gonna tackle.
Does anyone on this council have a problem with Mr. Riley always reaching out to the League of Cities? I like the idea of trying to see if there's a summary, I'm sure there is. Um, they had a legislative update that they did at the end of the term, so that's probably a good start, but the governor didn't sign everything until sometimes June thirtieth, he waited to the last second. So if we could see what's, you know, what passes, I mean, I, I don't, unless we're gonna pay him to read ninety bills, which I know he doesn't wanna do, somebody thinks it'd be a hundred pages, so. Everybody have a better idea, is that the way we wanna go about it to start? Yeah, okay, so minimal amount of time, see what they have, and then you can get back to us, and we'll take it from there. Mr. Reeves, I mean, I just mentioned a couple of the key ones. If you fall, if you get into that area, I mean, you know, I, I, you can't like run a funeral parlor from your house, but I mean, if a guy's running a accounting business, I think that's gonna be okay.
Well, they, they signed on the very last day, thirtieth of June, I think it was eighty-nine bills or something. Uh, the ones that really affect us are the bicycle, we can do that, and that's probably just some edit of the current ordinance we just need to do again. Should, should be pretty simple. Uh, the home business, there again, we've got a prohib, prohibition against it, so we need to just probably edit our ordinance at some point. The big one, though, is the House Bill fifty-three, which in your budget, you're gonna see that, uh, where the state is requiring every municipality to do a twenty-year needs analysis of their, uh, stormwater management system. And that's due to the state, uh, by July thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. Uh, and then every five years thereafter, and I, and I put a copy in, your, your thing, and really, you only go to, need to go to line one ninety-one, you don't need to read all the gobbledygook ahead of it. Which, for the city, that estimate, I, I got a revised estimate, and it's about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. It's, uh-
To do the study?
To do the study.
And those are stormwater?
Well, uh, you know, I guess how I look at it, we are, at some point in time, and every, like today, they sent out a little message about that American Rescue money. Uh, they told someone they're gonna give it to us, but they sent out, you know, a stack of paper like this to, to read, so you know all the goodies about it, but, uh, I think we'll be able to, because we can use that for stormwater, so if we're fortunate, we can kind of leverage that maybe with this money by doing a stormwater project with that money and use the stormwater so it doesn't hurt us in the end. So, uh, hopefully in the very near future, they'll actually give us the money. It's gonna be given by, uh, for the Department of Emergency Management, and they can't do any holdback, and I do know that they gotta give us a portion of it this year, and we've got until twenty twenty-four to spend it. So, uh, there are reports that we're gonna have to make, of course, uh, things to fill out, but that, that's an example of a bill that's actually gonna cost the city a lot of money. Most of the rest of them, really, uh, code enforcement, there was a bill signed that if you make a complaint, you gotta give me your name, or we can't investigate it. And that's, that's already come to kind of fruition, uh, because, uh, people don't wanna give you their name, because it might be their neighbor, and they don't wanna do that. Actually, we had a call today for, I think it was landscaping or something, somebody called, and as soon as you ask them for their name, well, I'm gonna give you my name. So technically-
That's why it passed the bill.
So technically speaking, we, uh, if we didn't find it technically speaking, we're not supposed to pursue it by how, how the, the law reads. So there's, there's nuances through all those bills, so we'll, you know, I'm sure Fred will get the summary, and, and I've kind of followed what still affects us.
Fred, what's going on you? So I think, you know, go ahead and see what you have, and if you report back to us and start this project, I mean, ninety bills, it's a, it's a lot to wade through, but I didn't even know about this one that you just said about this twenty-year study, having that one I missed, but I mean, when you get ninety of them blown by in one day, it's hard to track them all, so. And there's hundred that didn't get passed, so sometimes you follow them, and they don't know any worse, so. Okay, uh, anything else?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. City manager?
Yes, as I mentioned, uh, I gave you an updated budget based on a few things, and I kind of highlighted the things that were changed. Uh, we'll discuss this next week. Uh, I put page numbers, we have the page numbers in there and all the graphs, so it's a little more easier to read. We've also given you our financial statements for, uh, April and May, and I gave you, uh, DEP finally closed the CO issue out, and the sheriff finally closed it out, uh, that we maintained that, or turned the COs last year. Just wanna clarify, the, the statute says you can turn the COs, and in the email I got from DEP, they're not gonna do anything. They're, they're not gonna tell us to do anything, because the guidance, it's only guidance from them that says you should trim them to eighteen inches if you trim them. So, um, I spoke to the person that replaced Mr., trying to remember, Manelli or Mello, uh, he retired, but this Jason Spanger said, basically, it's guidance, because the statute allows you to trim them, but the guidance is eighteen inches. So I just wanted to close that out, it's gone, it's time to move on.
We cut to eighteen inches, we cut to about eighteen cent, maybe eighteen millimeters.
Well, the statute, the statute doesn't dictate that. This is just their guidance. Guidance says, the statute says you can trim them, doesn't say how low you can trim them, but when I had the conversation with him, and, and he was well aware of what happened, and he said, uh, that we're not gonna do anything with you, because I've been trying to get him to respond since, what, last October?
Yeah, we're in October, yeah.
Yeah, so that, that is, uh, finished, and, uh, I told you about House Bill fifty-three. Uh, uh, the gentleman that does a lot of our engineering and site plan review has a, a medical situation, and he's in a hospital, and I'm gonna be bringing something to you, uh, because he may be out of pocket for a month or two, so we'll use one of our other contracted engineering firms, which is Dool, and they've agreed to take over his twelfth and thirteenth street design, because he was just starting on it, uh, for the cost that he proposed, so it's not gonna cost us any more money, but they're gonna send me a letter, and I'll bring it to the council to transfer. I have spoken with Larry's wife, and, uh, the prognosis is good, but it's just a situation. So, uh, and we have, uh, Dool's gonna help us out with the site plan stuff that we need an engineer to handle, so, and that's part of the contract that we've got a couple years ago. Okay? Next Monday is a budget work session, and then there will be a special meeting following that to set the tentative military rate, and the tentative military I'm gonna propose is what the military rate is right now, two point oh three nine four. That just means we can't go higher than that after we set the tentative.
Do you have a, was it a workshop also? We have a, we have a work meeting also, right?
Yes.
Okay, it's nothing say that here.
Yeah, you'll have a, uh, we have the workshop prior to it, and then we have to set the tentative mileage, so we can turn that into the county. It's, it's normal process, uh, we're gonna recommend two point oh three nine four, which is the current mileage. I will tell you that the second set of numbers that came from the county, uh, on July first, instead of six point oh three percent, our value is seven point six percent increase, which is about eighteen thousand more dollars in, uh, mileage over the previous sixty-nine. So, uh, but we'll discuss that more next week, but I just wanted to let you know that, and mayor, I may try to add, if Dool gets me that letter to that special meeting, uh, the approval to transfer to them to do twelfth and thirteenth street design.
Okay, what letter am I giving?
The letter, no, no.
I don't remember I said I was giving you one, but-
No, not you, I'm saying Dool Engineering-
Yes?
-taking over that-
Yes.
-project. I may ask to add that to the special meeting-
Oh, yeah, that's fine.
-so we can move forward with that.
I just wanna clarify, we have the budget workshop and then, and the setting the tentative military, but then after that, we were gonna do a work session, right? Are we not doing a work session? No work session, so just budget, okay?
And then, uh, I think, try to schedule next month's work session on the sign ordinance to-
Is next month then, okay. I just, I, I thought it was-
Finish that.
I thought it was next week, so I mean, I'll read the sign ordinance much later, if it's not gonna be next week.
I, because it, that may take some time.
It very well may, yeah. We can do it next month.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll plan on that for the, uh, Monday of August.
Okay.
And that'll be what's on the agenda, discussion of the sign ordinance, unless there's a couple of other lighter things you wanna talk about.
Didn't we have something, there was something else that we pushed off to there too, and I forgot what it is, I'll remember it.
I've got notes, uh-
Yeah, I thought it was from last, last, last work session, we might have moved a couple things, but the sign was the date one, so.
That's-
Sign.
I'd like to, you know, Fred's done it two or three times, I'd like to get it resolved when we've done. Plus, we've got other ordinances stored going, and that's all I have.
Okay. City clerk? Oh, I'm sorry, wait, did anybody have any questions?
I only have one. Did Kyle get a response from HONCOR about the wiring changes and, uh?
No, we haven't, we haven't gotten anything from them yet.
Okay, all right, thank you. Anybody else? Frank?
Two things, um, that new bill identifying, when you have a complaint, you have to give your name. We don't have to give that name out to the person that we're best-
You should do.
We're, we're, uh, we're gonna do some research on that, because that could be an issue, whether we do or don't, uh, we're gonna do a little more research, but the, the, the bill basically states that if somebody wants to make a complaint, they've gotta give us their name before we can even, uh-
Well, if we're gonna redact it, then they didn't do a damn thing-
Right.
-doing it, so I think you're gonna have to give it out, but I'm not your attorney, but-
No.
The point of it was no anonymity.
Right.
That's what we have now, people call it in, and then you redact it, uh, that, you know.
What, what I think it'll do, one thing, I, I guess how I look at code enforcement, that means city staff needs to be more cognizant of what's out there, so that neighbor doesn't have to call in, and to me, that's more of a benefit.
Well, the other thing is, um, this past week or whatever, we have a great maintenance crew, I mean, those guys gave up, kind of gave up at their holiday weekend, they're out there in the heat, filling up sandbags, Kyle did an excellent job coming up with that new system, uh-
We're gonna make a couple more of them.
Good. Actually, he, they were telling me he's not taking the credit, he found it on YouTube, a bunch of kids, I think ten or twelve years old, came up with the idea, but it really saved a lot of time.
Or definitely, I was out there Monday for quite a bit, so it did save a lot of time. Ten bags at a time.
And I'll say it also, as usual, excellent response in, in the crisis, okay? And for the people in the city, you know, we have our differences, and people fight, but when it comes to a crisis, the city never fails to deliver, never, okay? Excellent job to you and your staff. Anybody else? Okay, uh, city clerk?
No.
No comments from the city clerk. City council comments beginning with Rita Swolka?
Uh, yeah, um, I just wanna also, um, comment and compliment the city staff for the job well done. Uh, one of my concerns was this email that we received, uh, regarding, you know, pictures of different signs. My main concern about that is, um, people going by and taking pictures of other people's property. Back in February, on February nineteen, twenty nineteen, I received a phone call from, um, actually, this gentleman's wife of a vehicle that was spotted going down her street and backing up and taking pictures of her property, and she kind of freaked out, believing that she was being stalked, and I just don't want these same property owners to feel that way too, because she not only called me, but she posted it all over social media, as well as I think she put notices on the door at that time on the city community center. But I just really want caution people from going around taking pictures of other people's properties. Call the correct people, the ones with authority, and have them go out and look if you have a concern or a complaint or a question or anything, but just don't take it upon yourself, because I just remember her phone calling me and reading her post, she was extremely upset and felt stalked by this person, so it was just somebody driving down her street taking pictures, so no different than these pictures here of property owners' properties. And other than that, I don't have anything else to add.
Okay, thank you. Leslie Mataro?
No comments.
On gun? Frank Banker?
Yeah, last month, I, uh, brought up the buoy issue as, um, and I did submit a resolution, and I talked to the city manager, and it's put it on hold, because we're trying to get a meeting set up with Beller Shore's to resolve both issues, um, which hopefully, you know, rela, and the, uh, just the umbrella and buoy issue, but quite hopefully get resolved, but I know, I've, I've been communicating with F W C, uh, about the buoys, um, I guess they got tired of me contacting their staff, so they sent me to their attorney, who tried to claim that, well, since I raised this issue, all the buoys are illegal in Pinellas, all in the sandkeep, so she then threatened that she's gonna remove them all because I informed her. So then I said, "Well, fine, you can, you can do whatever you want, but the blood will be on your hands and the first person that gets hit." Because for over ten years, the statute was changed, and over, uh, buoys have to be inspected every three years, so for over ten years and at least three inspections, the F W C approved illegal inspections. So she kind of changed her attitude, I guess, and contacted Lynn instead of me, and, and hopefully we can get this whole thing resolved, but it's still an unsafe issue, and it needs to be corrected.
Yeah, but just so you know, they, they're gonna look at our permit, that's what they're gonna start with, uh, and she told me she'd get back to me, uh, because our buoys may, well, they probably don't, they don't meet the guidelines, so, uh, they are gonna, and we'll have to change our ordinance, from what I understand. So they are gonna send someone out to evaluate our buoys. So until that's the, uh, I wanna make sure ours are right, as opposed to trying to put more buoys in that may not be right, but we will still talk to Beller Shore.
Frank? Frank, any questions? Good, Robin?
I'm good, thanks.
Did you get us?
Can't hear you.
Sorry, but just before the storm came, um, a gentleman's boat on a dilapidated lift collapsed and fell into the water nearby my house. Um, as timing would have it, the storm was approaching, and the boat was not secured in the water. Uh, the lines that were attached to it were very old, the boat has not been moved in years, uh, the lift had not been used in years, and, uh, it was an immediate hazard. Uh, a, a neighbor called me and said, "Hey, you're not gonna believe what's going on over there." Uh, I looked and, uh, looked out into the water, and, uh, he and his wife were trying to secure this boat, uh, so I grabbed, grabbed some line, went over there and helped him get it secure, and eventually some more neighbors came over and assisted with it. Long story short, we have addressed seawalls, docks- Long story short, we have addressed seawalls, docks, boatlifts. The one thing that we could not address is the fact that there's a giant vehicle suspended up in the air that is sitting on this impending doom boat lift. I think that we need to seriously consider something in an ordinance about this. If we hadn't, if the storm had been much worse than it was and we hadn't gone over there and secured his boat for him, it would have broken loose and probably broke someone's boat, would have damaged property or, or even worse, maybe caused someone their life. It's unacceptable. And I look all around the water and there's just one here, one there. They're just kind of scattered about. Boats on rusted out boatlifts that you know they don't work and they've not been moved in years and they're just waiting to fall in. So it, it, one of the work sessions, I'm gonna bring this back up and I would like to discuss it more because I think it's in the city's best interest, safety-wise, that we do something about it.
Absolutely.
And that, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. I have just a couple items. First, I'm just gonna touch briefly on the comments about photographing people's yards and stuff. I'm not your attorney, I'm not gonna give you legal advice. Check with your attorney before you do anything, okay? If you're taking a picture of a sign in someone's front yard, I believe you're fined. If you're taking pictures of their bedroom through their window, you're not gonna be fined, you're gonna be in jail. So be careful what you're doing, but taking a picture of a sign for documentation purposes should not land anybody any problems. I know it's uncomfortable. We've had people take pictures of our license plates at my house, we've had people take pictures of our house, where people walk on our property. A former guy, the city manager, walked on my property. That's how we met the first time. I didn't know who he was. He was taking a picture for female purposes. I thought he was my ex-wife's divorce investigator and got pretty upset. So we patched it up pretty quickly. Anyhow, that's that. Secondly, I'm just gonna say this out loud, just so people know what's going on. After the last council session, I got not one, but two records requests. One was a complete request for all of my emails going back eternally. Patty Gentry was able to cull that down to all of them since March. It's a voluminous request and I'm gonna be writing you a letter this week. I believe I have all the information I need legally to know exactly how to respond now and I'll let you know what the, you know, how the, what the arrangement will be for that. The second one may be a very limited request or may be even more voluminous and Patty was gonna check on that, so we'll wait to see what the second request looks like. And I think that one, that second one affects Mr. Banker also because it looked like it was directed to Mr. Banker myself, engine van squad. But if it's just the communications, as I read it, between the three of us, that's gonna be a real quick response because I don't believe there's anything. So we'll see how it goes. But anyway, I just wanted to let you know that so you can expect it. If you don't see something this week, let me know, okay? I think that's everything that I have for this week. Thank you for a good meeting. You know, the sign thing is a good example of how we debate things. I know, I saw some people in the audience, it's upsetting, we had to do amendments. This is the way it goes, this is the process. Florida doesn't allow us to talk behind the scenes. So it would be great if I could pick up a phone and say, "Clan, what do you think about this?" We can't do that. It's illegal. So we have to do it all here and it's time-consuming and it's sometimes a little archaic because we have to do it in a certain, certain fashion, but those are the rules and we have to play by them. With that, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So good.
Second? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Have a good night. Thank you for coming. We'll see you next Monday.